Of November 23rd, 2020, City Council Special Meeting. And Councilmember James, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. My pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
For the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Councilmember James, for leading us in the pledge. And City Clerk Dave, would you please take the roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Ham.
Here.
Councilmember James.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ferguson.
I'm here.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is Oral Communications, Part 1, and I do have one comment.
Okay, let's hear that.
Okay. The comment is from Sandy Exelby, and she writes, "Beaches were closed before Memorial Day due to COVID-19, and the pier parking lot was fenced off because people were removing the barriers. At a council meeting, I viewed Councilmember Ferguson yelling that all businesses, beaches, and parks should be open, and these decisions were under city jurisdiction. The city was following state mandated guidelines in order to prevent virus spread at large gatherings. It has been very hard to encourage people to take precautionary measures, and now we see the results in Orange County. We need our elected officials to put the safety of residents and visitors as their highest priority." And the next item on the agenda is to request a motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Okay. Second.
Second.
And who made that motion, I'm sorry?
Councilmember Ward made the motion, and Ferguson seconded the motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, for the vote, Councilmember Ham. Councilmember Ham, do you support that motion to waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances? Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Yeah, let me try it one more time. Councilmember Ham, are you there?
I am, aye. Sorry, Joanne, I'm having phone issues.
Oh, okay, thank you. That pass is four to zero. Item number three is Council Consideration of Censure of Mayor Protem Ferguson.
Okay, thank you very much, City Clerk. Before we get started on this item, do we have some public comments?
I have a point of order. I believe that we are supposed to decide who is running this part of the meeting.
Excuse me?
This part. I think we are to determine who is going to run this part of the meeting.
Oh, I don't, okay, I don't believe that was noticed. Rosenberg's Rules of Orders and the Ralph M. Brown Act requires notice if you're going to remove me as chair.
We're not removing you. I'm not removing you, I just think it's inappropriate for you to run this part of the portion of the meeting. So I would ask if there is a council member who would like to step up to run this part of the meeting.
Well, I don't think that's appropriate with our policy. City Attorney, what do you say?
And Council, the idea here was to give you the opportunity to decide, including yourself, Mayor Protem, how this could work most expeditiously for you as a body. I have never seen a member of a city council recuse themselves from participation in a censure hearing, and I wouldn't expect that here tonight. But if you wanted to take a different tack, which is not my recommendation, then you needed to take this opportunity to sort out the chairs and the chairmanship of it. So that was the point of raising this. And you should talk about that among yourselves as colleagues to see if that's going to work. But what I understand is that you intended to participate tonight, and then whether that makes sense to chair would be up to you.
Yes, and I don't have any intentions of relinquishing being the chair of the meeting as the acting mayor.
I will make a motion that I think Councilmember James should run this meeting, and I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
No, I don't allow it. I can't allow that. I make a substitute motion.
A point of order. Mayor, you, Mayor Protem, you have to call for a vote. There's a motion and a second.
Nope, the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, right here, I have a copy of them, don't allow anyone else to chair the meetings unless you're the mayor or acting mayor in my case. So you can't violate policy. You should have noticed it 72 hours in advance, and you didn't place it on the agenda. It was in the agenda report, but it wasn't an item to remove me to be chair. You have to be specific.
I think you are making my point. In order for us to get through this meeting, that it is the subject of your actions, that I think Councilmember James should be chairing it, and there is a second on this, and...
It doesn't matter, Councilmember Ward.
It does not.
Okay, cite the government code. I mean, cite the rule in Rosenberg's policy that we follow.
This procedure was given to us prior, and when we asked for it, of how we should conduct this meeting, and it was in those instructions, you also received them.
But it's not our policy, okay? It's not, and it's not the law. And you can't, you can't just change that at this time. It isn't the law. So cite the law that allows you to do that. I am not giving up the chairmanship of this meeting. I'm going to chair the meeting, just like I have the other meetings, until I'm not the acting mayor anymore.
Well, Scott, is that something that we could consider at this time, that she is not the Mayor Protem? Is that...
No, you couldn't consider that, no.
Okay. So, you know, I don't agree. I already think this is getting off to a...
I overrule that. I overrule you, Scott. No, I just can't. We can't do this. We just can't do this. Okay, let's get on with the meeting.
No, I think I'm...
I have to interject here as a council member. I need to hear the city attorney speak on the topic of chairing the meeting. I understand that you're Mayor Protem. I'm not sure where you came with the term "acting mayor", that's something you created this evening, but you are Mayor Protem, which indeed does chair the meeting. But for this meeting to go smoothly and for us to achieve the business of the evening, it might be more efficient to have Jean as the chair of the meeting. We have made a motion, there is a second. And Roberts Rules of Order does say that we have to have a vote when you have a motion, a second on the table. That being said, the city attorney has said that we are able to discuss this item this evening. So unless Scott tells us that that motion is second, is illegal in some way, shape, or form, then we take a vote on it.
I think it's a procedural motion that the council can decide.
You're wrong, Scott. Okay, I'm going to ask for one of my attorneys to speak on this matter, because I'm sure you've already spoken with them about it.
I'm asking you, Laura, because you don't have a position to speak on a motion, a second on the floor.
This is a meeting... This is really uncalled for.
This is a due process issue, and Scott has no right to set due process rules.
No one's supposed to be talking right now except the council.
Well, you're violating, you're violating the law, and my client has a right to the rules that exist at this time. And you can't change the rules, Scott, in the middle of the hearing. I am in violation because you...
You are not a part of this.
You, I am a part. I'm representing my client. My client's being charged with a very serious offense brought by you. And you cannot replace her because Rosenberg's rule says she chairs all meetings. There's no procedure to replace her. You didn't notice a procedure replace her. So you're violating her due process rights, and Scott knows it.
Brad, you need to stop talking. You need to stop talking, please. Please. Mr. Smith, are we able to mute the microphones of people that we have allowed to be in this process until they are such time that they should be talking? We need to do that. This is not, I can see what's going on.
No, we can't. It can't be, you're out of order. Just stop. We just stopped the nonsense. I'm chairing the meeting. I showed up. You know, you're here to flog me publicly. Let's just get on with the meeting, and you'll have your ample time to talk. I never, I never limit or try to limit or stop any of you from talking, and I'm fine being here all night. You can all speak.
Laura.
So I have policies. Why have laws and policies if you don't follow them?
Laura, I cannot hear Councilmember Ham. Will you please allow him to talk?
Sure.
So there's a motion and a second on the table. I'd prefer to take a vote on it.
I agree. Call for the vote.
No, we have to have a discussion on this. This is, this is absolutely against the policy, the law, and why even have them? We're not going to follow them. Why?
That's why we're here this evening, Laura, exactly. Why do we have a policy if you refuse to follow it? That's exactly why we're here. That being said, Laura, you told us two nights, a few nights ago, you were going to wear this as a badge of honor, and it sounds like somebody fighting him up the law is not taking it as a badge of honor that you told us you were going to wear it. So let's get through this. There's a motion, a second on the table. So I'm calling for the vote. So, Joanne, if you could take the vote, that'd be great.
City Attorney, would that be appropriate for the vote?
I need to have you give me a second to look through your meeting policies, because I, because I want to make sure that we're doing this right. So, Section 4.1.2 is the closest we come to something that speaks on this topic. It says, "The mayor with assistance from the city attorney is designated as a parliamentarian for city council meetings." I think that denotes that the acting mayor would be the chair. "The city council shall assist in the city attorney's absence. Any member of the city council or the public may raise a point of order and seek the city attorney's input on parliamentary issues, which shall then be considered by the mayor." I think we're that far, right? "The city council may override any parliamentary decisions the mayor with the majority vote. The mayor may interpret and apply and amend these policies." I think what's before you is a parliamentary order that Mayor Protem Ferguson has opined on. She can have assistance from me. What I, what I would offer in this case is that, under the circumstances where one of you is the subject of this proceeding, the rest of you might conclude that the meeting would proceed in a more orderly fashion, avoiding any appearance of self-dealing, if someone else chaired. I don't think that's obligation of your appointment of Thursday, Mayor Protem, and I don't think it's something that's off agenda, because every time you're dealing with a parliamentary decision under 4.1.2, that's implicitly part of your agenda.
Well, you're taking sides, City Attorney, again, and you need to recuse yourself tonight.
Okay, Joanne, so a motion, a second on the table, so we could take a vote.
Agreed.
Well, you're taking an illegal vote. It's out of order. You're out of, out of...
No, Julie knows. Thank you.
Should I proceed, City Attorney, with the vote?
That would be my recommendation.
Of course.
Councilmember Ham?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
No.
Motion carries three to one with Mayor Protem Ferguson dissenting.
Okay, so Councilmember James should take this portion of the meeting only?
So with that, I'm sure the council members each have some comments to make, and I'll start off with Councilmember Ham, please.
Excuse me, point of order?
Yes.
Councilmember James, we need public comments. We need public comments.
I thought we had public comments.
No, we haven't yet. A 93?
Do we have public comments?
We do have public comments. The question is, at what point in the meeting we would read them, because once council starts deliberations, we cannot accept any more comments. So do you want to, I'm not sure when deliberations would officially start. So if you'd rather wait to give more time for more comments to come in, that's another way to proceed.
So Jean, I thought that we would discuss how this meeting's going to go and the time limits for each.
That's exactly right.
Okay. We should do that.
Councilmember Ham? Your thoughts on, on the, how the meeting's going to proceed?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give the floor to the city attorney so we can outline some rules. You know, this is the first time I've ever been a part of anything like this in my eight years on council. So Scott, if you want to take over on what the most appropriate action is for this evening, please do.
Mayor Protem and council, thanks. I have some recommendations, but how this proceeds exactly is up to you as a body. But if, I appreciate the chance to reiterate my recommendations. I, I came up with them in consultation with Ms. Tally and with Mr. Malmman and Mr. Winston, who were generous with their time to think about this over this weekend, I should add. What I recommend is that each side of this issue be given an uninterrupted period of time in order to, to present that side, and that an equal amount of time be given to, to the respondent or to the censure subject. The Mayor Protem Ferguson's representatives have duly indicated that, that some of these issues are pretty complex and wanted much more time than what I suggested in order to present it. But in talking about it, with 15 minutes of introduction and an hour of presentation, they, they, they thought that, well, I said that I would recommend that, and I think that due process is served with, with that parameter. So what I would suggest is that the council consider spending no more than an hour on the presentation and the exploration of the grievances that are in the notice and that are in the draft resolution. Once those of you who want to explore or advance those grievances are finished within that hour, that the time be turned over to Mayor Protem Ferguson and her representatives. Before you deliberate, Joanne and I thought it would be a good idea to hear public comment then, simply because more comments may be coming in during that time, and we knew you would want to, to hear those. And it would be better, we think, to hear them all at once. So in a nutshell, what I would like to recommend to you is that you spend no more than an hour exploring and advancing, if you desire, the, the subject of the resolution and the notice. At that point, give equal time plus 15 minutes to Mayor Protem Ferguson and her representatives. Take public comment and then deliberate about what you want to do with the draft resolution and any action that, that might be taken to further that. The resolution is presented as in a very draft form. As the city attorney, I did not want to draft it, and so it was repaired, it was prepared by Ms. Tally, working the function that staff would usually work in, in preparing an agenda report and giving it to you. So I haven't had any chance to weigh in on it with you. I appreciate that opportunity to do that tonight with you. If there are deletions from it, clarifications or augmentation to it, then we'll need some time, if, if you desire to go forward, to, to have a recess, to refine that and then post it for, for the public to see in whatever form the council desires to.
Is Ms. Tally here, present with us this evening?
Yes, she's on, yeah, she's on, she's on the broadcast with you on my screen. She's where Marcia Brady would be.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, just return to your comments, please. No.
I'm City Attorney, this is Mayor Protem Ferguson. I did see your email where you provided notation in your email about the format, that each side would have a 15-minute open and 15-minute close.
Yeah, I think that'll be up to the council, the, the moving members of the council, to decide how they want to do that. I'll just leave that to you, Ellen, Ms. Ferguson. And then, but I, I do think that the responding team wanted to, wanted to have the guarantee of that structure. And so I would strongly suggest that you provide them that now and lock in on a process for, for doing this.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney. It's just important we have equal time for both sides.
I, I think that's...
We certainly, we certainly will have that. So Scott, City Attorney, we'll go back. So 15 minutes for each side to, to present a, an opening statement, is that correct?
Uh huh, either before or after the presentation.
Council starts?
Yeah, the, the ones in support of the resolution would start.
Okay. And then, the respondent, 15 minutes, and then, one hour for each side, and then 15 minutes to close with, is that correct?
It was going to be 15, I think what you should do, council member, is have an hour and 15 minutes, including whatever summary you wanted to make, on both sides.
So not break it down in 15 and 15 minutes and one hour, just an hour and 15.
I'd have 75 minutes and break it up anyway.
Mayor Protem Ferguson, are you okay with that?
Well, 15 minutes, yeah, for the opening, then an hour and a quarter, right, on both sides. That's what I understood.
No, I don't think that's what he said. He said, what he said was an hour and 15 total.
Okay, so you're changing, okay, so you're, why don't we take a vote on that, so that everybody knows?
One second, I'm trying to get you, I'm trying to give, give you an opportunity to comment on it before we take a vote on that.
Yeah, okay, Scott, okay.
Yeah, why don't, Mr. James, I'm sorry to interject. This is a hard one, we're all together. It's getting harder now. What I'd like you to think about as a council, and thank you for seeking Mayor Protem's Ferguson input, because that's very important, is whether you want to go with summary arguments, 15, 15, then presentation 60 and 60, or just give both sides of the issue 75 minutes.
And I thought that's what, that's what, I thought that was what we discussed a few months.
I think that's simpler, and that's what I'd recommend.
Mayor Protem Ferguson, does that sound fair to you?
No.
No, because we were under the understanding it was 90, and my attorneys in their conversations with the city attorney, so they prepared for 90 minutes. So I'm not satisfied with that.
Yeah, that would be if there's 15 minutes for closing or rebuttal. And I, I, I think that would be great, if that's, if that's really important, to, to let each side have. Jean, you and I talked about that possibility. You, as a council, could decide after the 75 minutes are used by both sides to have 15 minutes to rebut, if you want that. I'm seeing Mike and...
I don't, you know, if we're going to do that, I want to agree to that going into it, not, not make a vote on the fly later on saying... not, not make a vote on the fly, uh, later on saying we're gonna give them fifteen minutes, give ourselves fifteen more minutes, or, so if, if we want to, if we want to, um, go with seventy-five minutes and then, uh, fifteen minute, fifteen minutes of closing, uh, I think I'm good with that. Can I have a motion on that from someone?
Councilmember James, can I just clarify?
Yes.
I don't think the city's going to need that time, so I'm wondering what the other side would be rebutting. We wouldn't be making a comment. This is a city council meeting, this is not a court hearing, and, uh, I don't know that we should be doing rebuttal. I don't think the city council's gonna take seventy-five minutes, and that includes us discussing each one.
So I'll go back, so I will go back to the City Attorney. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, did you indicate to, um, council and, and to the Mayor Potem that we, they would have ninety minutes?
I told them that I don't get to decide the rules, but I told them that if they want to make a closing as part of that, that I would, I would support that. So I'd recommend that we are on the side of more process than less in a circumstance like this. If this, if the movements don't, um, don't need the time, then they just need not use it.
Okay. So I will make, I'll, I will make a motion that each side has seventy-five minutes to present, um, to present, and then fifteen minutes to close. Uh, can I get a second on that?
I'll second your motion.
Okay. City Clerk, can you call the-
Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
See, we're already off to a good start. Okay. So with that, are there any council member comments before we proceed? On this matter?
No.
Okay. Mayor Potem, anything you want to add before?
No, thank you.
Okay, so now a logistical question, who's keeping the clock?
That's a good question.
I believe City Attorney said that he was gonna keep the clock on this, and I would keep, I would keep the clock on the council, on the, uh, comments.
Is that okay? I, uh, Joanne has a lot of bells in the air right now, and I told her I could find a stopwatch and help out if that's okay with the council.
As long as you're watching the clock.
I'll do it.
Okay, so with that, um, City Attorney, I'm, look, um, I need some clarification on, when are we doing public comments?
Um, I think you should do that after both presentations, before your deliberations, before your close.
So there will not be a Part One, Part Two, there'll just be public comments?
Not right on this matter.
The part-
Excuse me, may I?
Item's not on the agenda.
Okay, good.
Uh, excuse me, Councilmember James, it's Mayor Potem Ferguson, um, I have a question of the City Attorney. Um, if he could just keep us updated on fifteen-minute increments, so we know how close we're getting to our time.
Happy to do that.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Okay. So-
James, would you like me to start?
I, I was just going to call on you.
Okay, so as the complaining council member, I will submit that the nature of my concerns are in two categories. Harassment, abuse, and retaliation against city employees, mainly the city managers, and violations of the municipal code or, or city code or council policy. For the ease of Mayor Potem and the city council, I have provided documents for each finding that is in Section Two of our report, and I will proceed in that order. I will give a description of each document, and council members can question each one, or we can have a discussion, keeping in mind that we have seventy-five minutes. My first concern is that Mayor Potem Ferguson has interfered with the powers and duties of the city manager. The first document I have included is a nine-two-zero-two零email from Mayor Potem Ferguson with the title of "Reverse Course Immediately." Mayor Potem Ferguson attempted to influence the city manager's decision to terminate a public contract with Rogers Tree Service. Mayor Potem Ferguson unilaterally instructs the city manager to have staff look into issues she raised at a September first, two-zero-two零 council meeting, and states the city council still has yet to make its final decision on this contract. Her instructions to this interim city manager are not supported by the prior vote or consequence of the council's deadlocked vote and the information provided in a closed session memo of nine-five-zero-two零, which is five days before Mayor Potem Ferguson's nine-two零email. My second, uh, grievance, which is, uh, number two, Mayor Potem Ferguson publicly criticized the city manager in a post on five-two-zero-two零. That would be A two for all of you following along in the documents. She used her Facebook page entitled Laura Ferguson, City Councilwoman, for erecting a fence to address the COVID crisis in our city, which followed a May nineteenth, twenty, city council meeting, where Mayor Potem Ferguson had agendized a vote on the fencing. This action by the Mayor Potem removed the city manager's authority to remove the fence, placing it under city council control. Mayor Ferguson used her Facebook page to put pressure on the city manager to reverse his order putting up the fence. The city received many, many emails criticizing the city manager and ordering him to remove the fence, when in fact he no longer had the authority to do so. A second document is B one, this is still criticism of city managers. Mayor Potem Ferguson interfered with the exclusive duties and responsibilities of the city manager relating to the appointment and supervision of public employees. She did this in a July first, two-zero-nine零email from Mayor Potem Ferguson, questioning the city manager and challenging his decision to hire a recruiter to fill the Deputy Public Works Manager. And if you look on the second page of B one, there is a, uh, LinkedIn advertisement of the, for the recruiter, for the public works director that she was criticizing. Uh, city personnel is under the purview of the city manager and his alone to decide what we need uh, for the operation of our city. The next document is a Facebook post by Mayor Potem Ferguson on May twenty-eighth, two-zero-nineteen. She criticizes the Assistant City Manager by publicly stating, "I gave the city manager twenty-four hours to respond to this serious complaint of mine," accusing the Assistant City Manager of falsely impersonating a city council member. Mayor Potem Ferguson arrived late to a Memorial Day ceremony at Park Semper Fi. She did receive a parking space, but accused the Assistant City Manager of taking her parking space by telling the volunteers he was a city council member. I have attended these ceremonies twice a year since two-zero-ten. Parking spaces are held for council members, dignitaries, and city managers to attend these ceremonies, and city managers have assigned seats to them in the ceremony, and they are recognized. Mayor Potem Ferguson's accusation was investigated and was found to be inaccurate. If Mayor Potem Ferguson has an issue with the Assistant City Manager, she should, uh, contact the city manager. It was unprofessional of her to accuse publicly the Assistant City Manager of wrongdoing and giving the city manager twenty-four hours to respond. It was disrespectful to both city managers. I think Mayor Potem Ferguson went out of her way to make these charges on Facebook and disparage the Assistant City Manager and disrespect the city manager. The next page shows a picture that she was at the event, which I was also at, and did not see her ever enter the event and sit with city council at the front. My next document is, uh, May thirtieth, a Facebook post by Mayor Potem Ferguson on her Facebook page. Mayor Potem Ferguson publicly criticized the city manager again about budget cuts in a post of Mayor Potem's Facebook page referencing the one-eight-nine零email of ideas she had for cuts to the city's budget, which included positions under the city manager's authority needed to operate our city. I have provided four pages of documents, the five-thirty Facebook post, the January sixth, nineteen email from Mayor Potem Ferguson, and email from the city manager of one-nine-nine零, answering her issues. Let me get through the pages, that would be four pages. Again, Mayor Potem Ferguson is, uh, not in charge of what the city manager, uh, of him hiring, uh, personnel that is needed for our city. My next, uh, concern is number C. It is a five-nine-zero-two-zero-two零voice-of-O.C. article where Mayor Potem Ferguson disclosed confidential vote counts on matters discussed in closed session in violation of the Brown Act and the Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-three. I have provided a copy of that article. Mayor Potem Ferguson waived confidentiality for the, uh, for the entire city council, something that she does not have a right to do. My next concern is D one. A Facebook post, again, by Mayor Potem Ferguson of September first, two-zero-twenty. Uh, before this Facebook post, on September first, Mayor Potem Ferguson spontaneously announced a claim by former city manager at the beginning of our city council meeting. This claim had been tendered to the California J P I A, and city council was aware at the time that they had accepted the, uh, responsibility for this claim, and council was aware that we had a duty to cooperate with the California J P I A's administration of this claim, including confidentiality and cooperation. The California J, I'm sorry. Councilmember James, or Councilmember Hamm interrupted her announcement, her spontaneous announcement of this claim, and Councilmember James, uh, said, "We cannot talk about this." Councilmember Ward made a motion to not disclose the claim, and Mayor Potem Ferguson ignored the motion and a second, and did not call for a vote at that city council meeting. City Attorney Scott Smith advised Mayor Potem Ferguson the California J P I A had requested cooperation, and she should not be discussing it, and Mayor Potem Ferguson continued to discuss, including stating that the former city manager had been an employee for five years. Mayor Potem Ferguson herself has been an employee of the city of San Clemente, and she should know that city employees have rights of confidentiality, and they should not be discussed by city council members in public. I don't think any city council member has ever made a public statement about a current or a former city employee. Mayor Potem Ferguson has also stated she has a master's degree in public administration. I think it is reasonable to believe she knows the rights of public employees and would know what actions would violate those rights. Following her public announcement at the city council meeting, Mayor Potem Ferguson also posted on her Facebook page a San Clemente Times article about the claim on nine-four-two零, and that is the Facebook page that you see that is D one. And again, on nine-seventeen, she posted a letter to the editor from her attorney, present here tonight, Brad Malamud, discussing the claim disparaging Mr. Maxinoff and requesting he drop his claim. And I have included that, that is page three of D one. D four, or D one, page four, is the comments from Mr. Malamud, also page five. The next document I have is listed as D two. On September thirteenth, two-zero-nineteen, Councilmember Ferguson wrote the entire city council an email concerning an action she stated would be agendized for a closed session. It was not on our closed session agenda. This email has been heavily redacted because it involves private third-party employee matters and attorney communications with them. But what is visible is her statement that she contacted opposing council in this matter, and she asked two follow-up questions, and you can see that I contacted, and there's questions one and two. The last statement says, "I reached out to the city, to the attorney, asking if I could sit in on the interview." The California J P I A was in charge of this claim, and it was inappropriate for Councilmember Ferguson to interfere with the duty of the city to cooperate with the California J P I A. She also has participated in briefings of employee actions as a council member. She cannot then participate on the other side of an issue, that is inappropriate, and does not follow cooperating with the California J P I A. My next document is E. See, I told you we're not gonna take very long on this. On June thirteenth, two-zero-twenty, Mayor Potem Ferguson emailed city managers accusing them of ignoring her emails. Mayor Potem Ferguson directed the city manager to include items on a city council agenda and stated not including these items in her email was in violation of policy. Mayor Potem Ferguson stated she was copying human resources to report continued acts of insubordination and purposely dismissing, ignoring emails from a sitting council member. So in this email, she is charging insubordination of a city manager and an assistant city manager. This is inappropriate for a council member to do. Uh, there are proper official city procedures. If you have an issue with a, uh, with a city manager, and you should avail yourself of those procedures. Mayor Potem Ferguson, in this email, was attempting to direct the conduct of the city manager without the authority of the city council, and made complaints of employee insubordination by the city manager to the city's human resources manager for his failure to follow her direction. The city manager reports directly to the city council, and Mayor Potem Ferguson should know the human resources manager has no authority as to the performance of the city manager. My next document is, uh, F. An April tenth, two-zero-nineteen Facebook post by Mayor Potem Ferguson on her Facebook page that she controls. She stated, "She was disappointed and surprised to not see a contract for a homeless shelter, even more disappointed to not receive a phone call, text, or an email in advance from the city manager explaining his reasons why he did not get the job done." This is public criticism of a city manager, rather than going through the channels or putting, or bringing this up in a closed session so that city council could deliver on it, on her, her issue. Mayor Potem Ferguson states there was direction by the city council on April second, two-zero-nineteen, for a shelter plan, and somehow miraculously, a contract with a nonprofit to operate that shelter would be agendized in a vote of only two weeks later on four-sixteen-nineteen. Councilmember Ferguson's comments do not reflect council's direction or council's expectation to the city manager's ability to secure a contract by April sixteenth of two-zero-nineteen. My next document is F two. This again is still criticism of the city managers. This is an April twenty-nine, two-zero-nineteen Facebook post by Mayor Potem Ferguson on her Facebook page, posting an email from, from her to the city manager, directing the city manager to again agendize a shelter on five-seven-nineteen and every agenda going forward until we have a shelter in place. She accuses the city manager of a Brown Act violation for having discussions in closed session about this issue.
Uh, council, I wanted to point out, we're at the fifteen-minute mark.
Thank you. I think we're gonna make it. Uh, my next document and concern is F three. It also is public criticism of the city manager, this is just another example. On May third, two-zero-nineteen, another Facebook post by Mayor Potem Ferguson on her Facebook page, sharing an email to the city manager. Her comments are, "Progress on homeless shelter plan should be agendized on five-seven-nineteen meeting and every meeting agenda until the plan is executed." This is her statement of criticism. This is her statement of criticism. If you don't agendize this item, I can only conclude that you are not prepared properly on this issue. You may not be required to copy, comply, excuse me, with my request, but you do serve at the will of the people, many of whom have indicated to me that they have lost confidence in you. The city manager does not serve at the will of the people. The city manager serves at the will of the city council." Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson is inaccurate in that. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson should not engage in public criticism of the city manager and assistant city manager. She's intentionally posting these accusations to embarrass and humiliate them instead of following official city evaluation procedures that are in place. If Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson has issues with the city manager's performance, there are official evaluation procedures in place to address issues and protect the rights of our public employees. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson should raise an issue in closed session to agendize a discussion with the city council if she has concerns of the city manager's performance. Any other employee, including the assistant city manager, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson should be raising that issue with the city manager. Hurling accusations and humiliating them on Facebook page, on her Facebook pages do not follow proper actions by a city council member towards our staff. My next concern is F4. It is a Facebook page post by Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson on her Facebook page of May 9th, 2019. She is directing the city manager to again, "Please be sure the temporary homeless shelter is on the 5/21 agenda. Over 200 people at impromptu town hall." These are her comments of criticism. "I wish you had stuck around to hear all of the amazing speakers and all their ideas, fears, and concerns. You need to present a plan with a timeline to execute immediately." She is publicly criticizing the city manager in an attempt to embarrass him. The last item for criticism of a city manager publicly would be F5. I have included an email from the city clerk that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson was going to present three photos under council member comments at our council meeting on 12/319. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson attempted to embarrass and humiliate the city manager by sharing photos, and I have included those for everyone to see, of individuals on the beach, and one of the individuals was the city manager's son. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson accused the city manager of participating in what she characterized as a VIP event that should have had a permit. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson was already aware and told by email that there was no permit and that there was no such event. Two weeks later, she shared these photos and publicly criticized the city manager in our December 3rd, 2019 city council meetings, showing these three photos. My next concern is number G. I believe this is a Brown Act violation. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson has broken the Brown Act by engaging in serial conversations with city council members. May 1st, 2019 email to all city council members by Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. She makes the following statement, and this email was sent to all city council members. "This is a good opportunity for me to ask the city, the other members of city council if the city manager has polled them on whether they support me and Mayor Pro Tem Bane's directive to have the sheltered beds be an agenda report for the open session at the city council meeting of May 7th. The city council cannot engage in conversations, and it would have been inappropriate for the city manager to poll all of the city council. That would have been a Brown Act violation for us to be discussing what we were going to talk about on a future meeting." My next concern is H. I believe Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson improperly used her position as a city council member to ask the city manager to question an employee who is the president of the San Clemente City Employees Association for answers to a resident, Tony Robolino, about an endorsement of a candidate by the San Clemente City Employees Association. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson asked various questions about the creation of the San Clemente City Employees have rights under labor relations, and the city is obligated to follow those. Employees Association filed a grievance on this action, and the city was sent a letter on 10/25/2019 by the Orange County Employees Association of their concern with Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson's actions. This complaint required a letter from City Attorney Scott Smith to the Orange County Employees Association on November 26, 2019, reaffirming the city respects the rights of its employees to organize and endorse candidates for political office, and that in the future, all communications with the San Clemente City Employees Association representatives would be conducted in the proper channels. My next issue is I. We are almost done. This again is a Facebook page post by Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson of September 12th, 2020. And this issue that she is speaking of is a public opinion poll that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson shared with the press. "The survey was held by the council as confidential and part of our deliberative process to protect council legislative authority and protect possible council deliberations and actions on any issue in the future." Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson decided to send this to the press, and I would point out on page I, number two. She says in the Facebook page of September 12th, I'm looking for it, that she shared this information. Just give me one second. October 25th, at 1:16 PM, she wrote, "Late September, when I gave the San Clemente Times a copy of the results, because the city manager had denied the media a copy citing deliberative process privilege." She even admits there's never been a mention of the survey or no discussion or deliberation of the city council. That would be true because the city council was holding this as privileged or confidential information so that we could have conversations in the future about these issues. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson decided on her own to waive confidentiality of the council and share this, this poll. She also goes on, on page two of this post, that she's asking why the survey was secret. What is more concerning at the end of this post, if you look at the last paragraph on page two of three of I2, she says, "After a new city council is seated post-election, I will be moving to eliminate the deliberative process privilege to ensure transparency and to eliminate these back-room deals." She is calling deliberations of the city council that are confidential back-room deals to the public. She also states, "I am hopeful that Councilmember Kathy Ward will join me in this pursuit to change this policy." I find that concerning that she's posting that to the public and asking for me to move with her on that. I think it's inappropriate. The last item that I have of concern involves Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson's attempt to violate agenda-setting policy. On October 6th, 2020, this email that you see on item J. "Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson informed the assistant, the, excuse me, the interim city manager, Eric Sun, to place the Shorecliffs Golf Course matter on the agenda for a closed-session discussion. Mr. Sun did not, did not agend that, agendize that matter, and in her words, unilaterally decided not to place this item on the closed session for public view over my request. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson reported her complaint to the city clerk, Joanne Babe, and human resources manager, Heather Lowe. Her statement was, "In the future, if an item I've requested is not on the agenda, I will be sending to the city clerk to include on the agenda, which is her duty bound to include under current council policy. Provision set by the city council concerning this policy, number 1201-11 dated May 19th, 2020, does not allow for Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson to demand matters be placed on the agenda. Interim city manager Eric Sun's actions were consistent with the council majority understanding of that policy, and Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson refuses to abide by that policy." Those are my issues. I believe they will support the findings that I have seen that have been included as a possible resolution for the city council. If anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer them on the city council.
I have a question of the city attorney. This is Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. City attorney, how much time did Councilmember Ward present just now?
Well, 31 minutes have been gone since this presentation.
Okay. I thought, I thought we were doing opening 15 minutes each, but...
No. Excuse me. We agreed on 75 minutes each.
Opening at 15.
Exactly.
I thought we went back to the 15-minute opening and 15 minutes.
No, we voted on 75 minutes, and that was voted 4-0. Um, city, uh, excuse me.
Maybe the city clerk can do that.
Excuse me. City clerk, could you report on the vote?
Yes. The motion was by Councilmember Jean, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, carried 4-0, that each side receives 75 minutes to present and 15 minutes to close.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, does that answer your question?
Yeah. So 75 plus 15. Okay. Yeah. Are you done?
No, we're not done. And would you please, Mayor Pro Tem, please keep the background noise down. We can hear Mr., what's his name? Brad.
Mr. Allen. Yeah. I was just asking if you were, if your side was done on your opening.
No, I, I, no, we're not.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
Councilmember Hamm? You have the floor.
Yeah, Jean. You know, initially, I was supporting Kathy Ward and you, Jean, and your endeavor to go down the path for censoring Laura Ferguson. I've had the opportunity to serve the city, San Clemente, for the past eight years, and I can say on the court.
Excuse me. Point of order, Councilmember Jean, I have a point of order that I need to be able to see my accused, and he's not showing his face. Could you ask Councilmember Hamm to show his video of his face?
Jean, can you have her stop interrupting me, please?
No, I have the right to, Councilmember Hamm, and you need to show your face like the rest of us, and you're accusing me of these things that want to be able to face you. You have to face me.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Okay. City attorney, please rule on this.
Um, the city is allowed at this point to use, because of the pandemic, whatever means of communication work, so I, I don't believe, first off, this isn't, this isn't a criminal proceeding or even a civil proceeding, and the governor's emergency order allows you to call in as you may with a video or not.
Okay. City attorney, so I don't have the constitutional, don't speak over me, Chris Hamm. City attorney? No. I was, I was having a follow-up question of the city attorney. Please be respectful. So I don't have a constitutional right to meet my accuser face-to-face, then, is what you're saying, city attorney, because of the pandemic?
That's right.
That is your accuser. Okay.
Yeah. I don't think those constraints apply in any event. I think you're on.
Mayor Pro Tem, have your questions been answered fully?
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Jean?
Proceed. Councilmember Hamm?
Thanks, Jean. Uh, as I was saying, I've been, I've had the opportunity to serve the city for the last eight years. I've served with, I'd say, a large array of council members in that eight years' time. Some I've agreed with, some I've disagreed with. I'm sitting now with three separate council members that I've agreed and disagreed with at multiple stages throughout my eight-year career. That being said, I want, I'd just like to echo all the statements made by Kathy Ward. I think she made a, presented an excellent argument. Of course, she, as well as many others in this community, know there's a plethora of accusations that can be hurled in determining that we need to censure Laura Ferguson in this matter. I, for one, am a little disappointed that she didn't adhere to her word, which I guess shouldn't be shocking since every meeting she waivers back and forth, which she stated last meeting she was going to wear her censure as a badge of honor. Here, I'm looking at a screen with two separate city, or two separate attorneys representing her, so apparently, this wearing of the badge of honor has been thrown out the window. That being said, I don't think Laura has an understanding of the way governance works. We're a governing body. We make decisions as a group, and whether you like it or not, whether you agree or not with the decisions made by the majority, the majority directs city staff and ultimately city policy. And when she doesn't agree with city policy, she uses every means possible to overrule that, and that's not the way city governance is expected to work. The only thing she's accomplished in her two years on city council is effectively undermine the faith and trust in our municipal government. When she was elected two years ago, I think she would have counted Steve Short, Stan Bane, Jean James as great friends, as close individuals, as confidants. Since that time, she alienated our former mayor, Steve Short, Dan Quit, I don't know where he's at, Jean, she's alienated you very clearly. She didn't like our city management and James Maxinoff, so he left. We got a new one, Bob Dunnitt. She didn't like him. He left. Now we have Eric Sun. She doesn't like him. Effectively, she's alienated each and every person that she's been expected to work with from day one. Now, you don't have to be friends with people. You don't have to like people. You don't even have to get along, but when you look around and everybody around you is the problem, sometimes you have to look in the mirror. And unfortunately, it's come to this level. It's super disappointing for everybody involved at this point that we've come to this level that a censure is the action to be taken. And I just like to remind the people that the motion was made by Kathy Ward, who's been on council for six years, and seconded by Jean James, who was endorsed by Laura Ferguson two years ago. So we've come to the point where the majority council thinks the only effective means of action is to have a censure so that we can have an appropriately operating city council. That's all we're looking for. We're looking for a city council that can get things done, and effectively, Laura Ferguson has been a roadblock at each and every step for everything we've tried to accomplish. Jean, thank you for managing this meeting. Kathy, thank you for doing a fantastic job in presenting all these arguments. I don't think I could have done it as clear and concisely as you did. I guess I'll look forward to asking my questions in the middle of Brad's rant in 30 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamm. So I will conclude our comments, and it is truly unfortunate that we're dealing with such an unpleasant topic this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, we have better ways to spend our time and resources. I come here tonight with an open mind, although many of the facts are not in dispute even by Ms. Ferguson. My concern lies with how do we go forward and what is the appropriate remedy? That is my overriding concern. It will merely be a finding of a majority of council. This is not a hearing. This is, this is not proceeding. This is a council meeting. There, there are no sanctions attached to it. There's no punishment. There's no punitive action. This is merely a meeting of council to try to determine how we can move forward. To be very clear, this is not a First Amendment issue. This is about protecting our city. I'm deeply troubled by the concerns raised by Councilmember Ward. We simply cannot ignore them. Councilmember Ward has a litany of concerns, and it's incumbent upon us as council to consider them. Is a censor, is a censure an appropriate option? Is a censor of, is a censure an appropriate option? Um, I'll be asking that of legal counsel this evening, what the precedents are, and a resolution or censure, do we go forward? As I, as I look at, at the government code, um, we have other options. We could refer this to a grand jury. We don't want to do that, that's lunacy. That, you know, that is, that is overkill. But I do want to be able to limit, to control, I should say, the release of confidential information out of, out of closed session. Do we have to go get a court remedy to that? Do we have to get an injunction to prevent Ms. Ferguson from revealing more confidential information? This seems to be our options. What we cannot do is ignore them. You know, I think many people watching us this evening don't understand the concept of closed, of closed session. The Brown Act allows a legislative body to meet in private with its advisors, attorneys, consultants, and others. Examples of topics, and pretty much limited to this, labor negotiation, litigation, personnel matters, and real estate negotiations. Items discussed in closed session are then deemed to be confidential and would take a majority of council to waive that privilege. Closed session is practiced in every California city in one form or another. So what are my concerns this evening? Well, it, it goes down to personnel and litigation. Would it be appropriate for an elected official to discuss employee performance in the open? I think not. Performance, lack of performance, concerns about capacity are all off limits for discussion with the public. These are matters to be discussed in closed session. Transparency is great, but is not, does not outweigh the constitutional rights of our employees. As council members, we do not have the First Amendment right to publicly criticize a city employee. That is simply not appropriate and violates the constitutional rights of our employees. Employee constitutional rights trumps all others and trumps any demand of transparency. Small business owners do not go to social media to criticize employees. Publicly traded companies do not have a Facebook page to criticize and shame employees, nor should we as a government entity. First Amendment rights are not absolute, particularly as it relates to elected officials. Unfortunately, we have seen public shaming of the assistant manager, and in one case, the human resource manager. We simply need to move away from this type of behavior. I am saddened by this. It is painful to watch this. I want it resolved. Litigation. Would it be appropriate and in the interest of the taxpayer to discuss legal strategy in the open so opposing council could use it against the city? I think not. Would it be appropriate for a council member to discuss litigation in open session? It severely impacts the ability of our legal team and our insurer to negotiate a settlement. At times, and Ms. Ward has pointed this out, Ms. Ferguson has made contact with opposing council. This simply does not help the city. We need Ms. Ferguson to stop these type of violations of the Brown Act and stop exposing our city to litigation and subsequent settlement. As it relates to the litigation, the release of the survey should have been kept as a privileged document until council approved its release. The city was taking the temperature of the people of San Clemente. By releasing the survey, we provided treasure trove of intelligence to opposing council who represent those who want to turn our open space into a homeless shelter and permanent supportive housing. It is difficult to gauge how much damage has been done to our case to protect our city. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want a homeless shelter with permanent supportive housing in the 10-acre lot at Veracruz in Pico, you could not have asked for a better Christmas present. I am profoundly disappointed in Ms. Ferguson's choice to release the confidential information. The struggle between transparency and protecting the city is something we always need to keep in mind at all times. Consequences to elected officials. California Code 54963 states a person may not disclose confidential information that has been acquired by being present in a closed session. It further states violation of this section may be addressed by the use of such remedies that are currently available by law, including, and this is important, including but not limited to injunctive release, disciplinary action against an employee, which is, this is not the case, referral of a member of the legislative body, this, in this case, to a grand jury. I am curious, would Ms. Ferguson and her attorneys prefer, prefer a referral by this body through the DA to the grand jury? That seems exceedingly severe and, and certainly should be avoided at all costs. Possibly she and her attorneys would rather for the city to get a court order to prevent her from disclosing further confidential information. Again, do we really need to do that? For a moment, allow me to discuss the deliberative process. It exists when one of, one of two things are present, the city is pre-decisional on a matter, or, and/or two, the matter is in deliberation. This is a practice of common law and has been in existence since the birth of our republic. Can you imagine the U.S. Supreme Court deliberating in public? Or the Joint Chiefs contemplating military operations in a public setting? The same rules apply to our city. The survey released by Ms. Ferguson was protected by closed session under pending litigation and by the deliberative process. Again, we cannot underestimate the harm done by this release. For me, I'm not so interested in taking action against Ms. Ferguson for her actions. I'd much prefer a path for us to get to a place where Ms. Ferguson has trust in her fellow council members and they in her. An argument can be made, Ms. Ferguson has acted repeatedly in a manner that was not in the best interest of the city. Again, I'm more interested in resolving this matter going forward than I am a pound of flesh. However, that starts with Ms. Ferguson. We need to have confidence in her ability to properly handle confidential information. For me, I need acknowledgement and commitment to work with us when she feels confidential documents need to be released. Finally, let me speak directly to Ms. Ferguson. I have no idea what you endured as an employee with the city. Obviously, it's had a lasting impact. I have offered in the past to support the appointment of investigator in this matter. I stand ready to make that offer again. However, sitting on the dais is about serving our city, not about retribution. You were elected to serve the people of San Clemente, not to settle old scores. Rather than attacking the process or motivations, I ask that you simply deny the, the concerns or acknowledge the concerns being presented by your colleagues tonight. It's my observation, your, your actions have led to an unnecessary demand and subsequent high settlement with Mr. Mashinoff. The release of confidential documents has created a serious breach of proprietary information. At this point, we have a council that you, that you don't trust and council does not trust you. Please listen while I say, there are no conspiracies again, against you. There's no need to be paranoid. Your note of October 28 alleging an employee remotely accessed your computer and took video, photos, and audio recorders of you is disconcerting and frankly needs, if in fact it did occur, frankly, it needs to be further investigated. I ask you to get that computer to the appropriate authority, whether that's the city manager, the sheriff's department, or the DA. Please tell me, you know, you have two years remaining on council. I want to work with you, I really want to work with you. I don't want to be an advocate, adversary. Sometimes we will agree and sometimes we will disagree. We don't have to be friends, we certainly won't be buddies, but we do have to be colleagues and respectfully to each other. Please tell me how you'd like to proceed with that. For me, as one council member, here is how the night could end on a high note. Pay, make a public statement that, one, you will not release any future confidential information, and, two, you refrain from publicly criticizing any employee, any city employee other than through private conversations with the city manager, and if that involves the cit, and if it involves the city manager, bring it to council. Let's put an end to this and work together. Thank you. That's, um, council member Ward, council member Ham, do you have anything to add?
Um, council member James, sorry, 45 minutes, I just wanted to give you.
Okay, thank you.
Wild stuff.
I would just like to say, Jane, that, uh...
Go ahead, Chris.
Jane, I, I would just like to say that those were very eloquent words, they were very well spoken. You hit on a lot of different topics, differing from what Kathy Ward has hit on this evening. And I, I think your sentiment is spot on, Jane, that ultimately the goal of the four of us should be to run the city in an efficient manner, and unfortunately, it hasn't been going that way the past two years. And so, I would echo every comment you made in terms of trying to find a middle ground to work forward, to come, to move forward from this. So thank you for those comments, they were very well said.
Thank you. Council member Ward, anything else from you?
No, I'll, I'll wait till we actually deliberate whether, uh, we're going to have to do this or not. So I'll wait for public comments and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson's response. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, that's...
When you're done, council member James, I wanted to, to give you a, a little bit of guidance, if, if it's all right, but I...
Certainly, go ahead.
Is, is this the time? Okay. Um, I wanted to say that there are a lot of things from one council member to another that can frustrate you and that can lead to consternation and lead to criticism. And I don't want to pretend to get in the way of, of what individual council members might want to say about each other in that respect. When it comes to a censure, uh, this is a legislative undertaking, it's like a proclamation, but one constraint that the courts put on censure is that it cannot implicate and cannot prohibit First Amendment, uh, exercise, right? And so I've gone out of my way, as, as the council knows, and as, um, uh, Mayor Pro Tem's team knows, to avoid participating in bringing this forward. You've been left as individuals to, uh, to do that on your own. And so yet, there, there are, um, in the evidence that's been presented tonight, some complaints about speech that might be protected and some evidence that might be protected speech. And so as you do with any decision before you, especially any that are, are formal and that require, uh, that have constitutional constraints, I wanted to make sure that there's time tonight to advise you, if it's all right with the council, on what portions of the, um, grievances and what portions of the evidence that you've heard tonight, whether it's from, uh, council member Ward's presentation, your comments, council member James and Ham, and anything that might be said by the public. So i, is it okay, I, I think I can save, uh, Mayor Pro Tem's team a little bit of time if I went in now to, to give you kind of some rough guidelines on that, and depending on your deliberations, we'll put a finer point on it, I don't know, later on, but I don't want them to take time and go to trouble if there's something that I can, can advise you on and that, that you might, if you find me. I'll invite Patty also to weigh in if, if she has anything to add. But what I want to add is a broad brush, I, I know you all know this and I'm stating the obvious, but you all five, well, all four right now, have a constitutional right to be elected to office, to campaign for office, to hear your constituents, and to speak to your constituents. The general rule is that when you decide to do that, heaven knows why anyone would, uh, you have a constitutional right to, to pursue, uh, that post and to pursue that communication with your constituents. Um, there are some limitations on that, and I don't want to talk about specifics here, it's kind of your job to apply these rules to the facts a little bit later on, but there are some constraints here, uh, to First Amendment activity on any member of this body's part. Um, the first is that, uh, you're not allowed to divulge the content of closed session discussions. There are means to seek redress or even to seek law enforcement assistance in correcting them, but the, uh, the Brown Act protects those communications, uh, between, uh, well, between and among you when they occur in closed session. Uh, the second one is that no individual member of the council is entitled to waive the attorney-client privilege without seeking authorization from the body of the council. When it comes to disparaging or, or speaking ill of public employees, uh, there, those rules are a little bit nuanced. Um, my view on this is that, um, each of you is a, a public official and a public figure, and that obviously you can criticize each other publicly as much as you want. I also think that a city manager is a public official and that the city attorney is a public official and also public figures, and that you as a body, because you appoint those two posts, um, have the right to, uh, criticize, um, each other and to criticize us publicly. So I would want to make sure that what you're doing tonight isn't a censure based on public criticism of your city manager. I think the rules are different for subordinates of the city manager. Uh, those individuals are probably not public figures, uh, they're not presumed to be, and they are protected, uh, by countervailing rights to privacy and to property. Um, they are also protected by, uh, due process that limits, uh, your ability to, um, discipline them or to, um, criticize their performance without giving them a right, well, for one thing, you're not supposed to be doing that because they don't answer to you individually, and, um, they, they can't have that done publicly, uh, unless they choose that to occur. Uh, again, I'm not saying that any of this has happened, I'm telling you what, what the rules are and leaving that to you. Um, that you, um, are able to talk about, uh, your, um, your brothers, uh, in terms of how, the direction you would like the city to go in, obviously, um, but if your communications constitute unfair labor practices in contravention of California's labor laws, specifically the Myers-Merleus Brown Act, uh, those communications are not, are not protected. And then finally, this one's a, a little bit more difficult, but giving ultimatums or threats to a city manager that contravene, uh, council direction in any particular matter, I think constitutes hostile workplace environment, and that's not protected speech. You can't urge an employee, you can't urge your manager to do something illegal, um, and I think by the same token, uh, you raise concerns and your speech isn't protected if you give direction or especially threats to, uh, a manager, uh, in contravention of his or her direction from the mayor of the council. So as you look at these, those are kind of four categories of, um, exceptions to the broad right of First Amendment, uh, protections that, that you have as elected officials and your ability to communicate with the public. Of course, you can call the manager and yell at him, uh, you can, uh, call and suggest that, uh, they're doing everything wrong, um, and I wouldn't want you to discipline one of your membership for doing that. Um, but if, uh, clear direction has been given by the body and then you're leveraging or threatening the manager, uh, if they don't contravene that direction, that's not protected speech, that, that's, uh, something that, that's constrained by their constitutional right. So I, I hope I haven't gone on too long, but, uh, when you take this up to deliberate, I, I wanted to reassure Mayor Pro Tem and, and her team before they speak that we'll be talking about that. Uh, I can help you apply those constraints to, uh, to your deliberations later if you call on me to do that, but I, I didn't want to just leave all of this laying out there with suggesting that, that we're going to need to talk about those bumpers before, um, any actions taken, if that's the desire of the council. I don't know if Christina has anything else to add to that, Christina, um, to, to what I've said.
I, I don't, uh, Scott, I think that that's a great summary of, um, the law and the limitations for purposes of censure and, um, so... so, yeah, no, I don't have anything to add at this time.
Councilmember James and council, thank you for, thank you for that opportunity. I, I can answer any questions to my app.
Thank you. Before we give up, relinquish our time, Councilmember Ward or Ham, do you have any comments after the city attorney's, uh, instructions to us?
Uh, only that Scott, you know, you help us, uh, later on if we are looking at findings of any of those that would apply to, uh, you know, the ability to criticize the city manager in public.
Get to that point and decide to act, uh, when you have these, these elements that you've presented. Um, I'm happy to help you with those or any findings of fact that might apply to them, um, if that's the direction the council takes.
Thank you. Uh, I don't have anything further. Councilmember James, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ham?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, um, turning it over to you. And you have one hour and fifteen minutes of uninterrupted time. And to the IT folks, if you can make sure you open up the, uh, speaker for Mr. Malamud and for Mr. Winston and shut down the speakers for, uh, Ms. Ward and Mr. Ham. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember James. I'll turn this over to my attorney.
Okay. Um, thank you, uh, all for all those statements. Um, I actually can't believe what I just heard. Uh, if, if the word hypocrisy comes to mind, you complained that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson embarrassed and humiliated the city manager. And I think Kathy Ward, Councilmember Ward, said that six, eight, ten, maybe fifteen times. And what was she doing the whole time? She was embarrassing and humiliating Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. So, apparently, the actions that she does in council are okay. But, and I don't even admit that she, that, that Ms. Ferguson embarrassed or humiliated anybody, but that's the crux of your charge. So, exactly what you're accusing her of, you did tonight in spades. Let's move on to, uh, a number of things. And I can be a little disjointed because I found that, uh, that the statements were disjointed. Chris Ham, I'd like to address what you said. Apparently fascism is the new rule in San Clemente. You said only the view of the council, the majority of the council can be had, and nobody should dissent from it. And if they do dissent, they should be censured. I don't know what country you're living in, but we have a First Amendment in this country. Um, you, you said, you said the only effective means to gain action here is to silence Ms. Ferguson. I think that's quite, 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 uh, rich. Gene, you claim, Gene, I'm sorry, I want to be proper. Gene James, you said that, uh, you, you were keeping an open mind, yet when you, when you voted on Tuesday last week to, uh, have this hearing, you solemnly yes on your vote. So, you don't have an open mind. In fact, you, you have such a closed mind that you said one of the remedies was to, uh, recommend this to the DA for criminal prosecution, which means you've already decided that a crime was committed. Yet, in the entire presentation, no crimes were described, no crimes, not one. In fact, not one rule violation was even described. So, oddly, it, it's strange that your open mind, we'll see your open mind when you vote no tonight on every one of these counts. Um, uh, let me address, um, the fact that, uh, I get to be, like I said, a little disjointed, but the, uh, Scott, I think, and Gene and other people said that, uh, what happens in closed session is, is not allowed to be uh, stated in public. That's just not the rule. Scott knows, Scott Smith knows that, and Gene, you should know that. For example, anything that's not agendized, it's said, can be reported, can be reported out. Any vote is required, is required to be reported out. So, what you're accusing of reporting out of vote is required under the Brown Act to be reported out. So, I, I'm just not sure where you, what you guys read and where, where you're going, but that's that. So, what you heard from, from Ms. Ward in her thirty-one-minute presentation was a, um, basically an analysis of the, of the resolution that is going to be voted on later. What you didn't know is that apparently those documents you're referring to are not in evidence. They were not presented to us before the hearing. We didn't have time to read them. I have not read them uh, fully because I only found out about them a few minutes before the hearing. They were provided days ahead or weeks ahead or even hours ahead. And in fact, when I called up earlier today, apparently after they were released, but I didn't know that at the time that they were released or not, um, I asked how many people are going to speak to Joanne Bade, city clerk. She told me there are about fifteen cards have been received. I asked, is there any other information I should be aware of? She says, no. So, I didn't look to see if anybody had posted emails. Nobody called me. Scott Smith didn't tell me. Joanne Bade didn't tell me that documents are going to be posted. This is, this is trial by sabotage, not how we practice in America. Laura Ferguson, Mayor Pro Tem, has due process rights that have been violated left and right. Remember, this hearing was set illegally. I'll get into that a little bit later. There is no properly noticed meeting tonight at all. So, uh, this, these are the people who want to censure somebody. We'll get into that. Criticism, disrespect, disparagement, and inappropriateness were the grounds of eight or nine of these, uh, charges against, uh, Ms. Ferguson. There are ten charges. And out of those charges, those elements, disrespect, disparagement, inappropriateness, and, uh, um, are, are simply not a crime. They're not illegal. There's nothing wrong with that. That's called a First Amendment protected speech. Scott Smith just told you that's protected. So, uh, uh, the, the idea that you could censure somebody for exercising First Amendment speech regarding the city manager, if you could, you all should be censured tonight for what you said about Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. I'm suggesting you have the legal right, inside or outside of council, to use that speech. You heard the word criticism repeatedly mentioned by Ms. Ward. Criticism is not illegal, and there's nothing in the San Clemente Municipal Code that outlaws criticism. In fact, just so everybody knows, the San Clemente Municipal Code does not contain the word "censure." There is no censure in San Clemente. I'll get into that later. The reason this, in my opinion, that Ms. Ward made the opening statement is that she probably likely knew that her, her attorney, Christina Tally, would never have argued that somebody could be censured for criticism. Scott Smith just verified that for us. As far as the documents that, that are the entire basis of this case, those aren't evidence. At best, they're hearsay. There was no foundation. They weren't read. Uh, what we had was a summary of what Kathy Ward thinks they said. That's not even allowed to be considered. There's nothing in front of this council right now against Ms. Ferguson. There is no case. So, the public understands what Kathy just did was become judge, jury, and executioner. She decided what those documents said, what the impact of those documents were, and how they should be interpreted. That's not how even minor, mild due process works. No, she should have read into passages of those. She should have explained how they should be interpreted. But their case is closed. They get no more evidence. And they don't get to discuss anything that's not in evidence. Part of due process is, they don't now get to create a new case. Their case is done. Their case is finished. I thought it was rich of Gene James to ask Ms. Ferguson to give up her First Amendment rights so she can remain on council or not be censured. Uh, Gene James wouldn't do that, I hope. First Amendment rights are something we get in the United States. That's part of our birthright. And by the way, Gene, deliberative process privilege is not a common law thing. It was created, I believe, I'm just talking off the top, by California court that granted, uh, deliberative process to, uh, legislative bodies. I may be wrong there, but it's not a common law remedy or a common law right. One of those rights on deliberative process is, the only way you can have deliberative process if you claim it is to inform the public why releasing a document will chill the deliberations of, of the council. Gene, even you, Laura, I'm sorry, I prefer to use last names, but the council members, none of you would not be able to deliberate, would have chilled deliberations because a public survey was released. And if every document within the staff is going to be not released until somebody at the city pulls the council to decide if it might chill their future voting records, uh, you're going to have no documents released, which is why Ms. Ferguson was correct. San Francisco did away with deliberative process over twenty years ago because it is BS. That's the legal term, BS. So, what do we have here tonight? This hearing is payback and a sham. In April two thousand nineteen, in a meeting with City Attorney Smith, Councilmember Ward decided to crush Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. This hearing is accumulation of a planned takedown. At least eight of the allegations are protected free speech, protected by the First Amendment. Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson's speech is protected. Apparently, both Ms. Tally and Mr. Smith missed that issue in constitutional law. He seems to think, according to night, that there are reasons why certain speech is not protected. Well, we, we will differ. Tonight, the majority wants to censure based on rules that do not exist. There are no censure rules in the San Clemente Municipal Code. The supposed neutral City Attorney Smith states that censure can proceed under common law. Yet, he could not provide us any rules or how Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson would have known what conduct violates these rules. Now, earlier today, I believe at about twelve seventeen in the morning, Mr. Smith received a, and so did the council members, I believe, a five-page excellent letter of the law by my co-counsel, Mike Winston. In the, in that letter, he, he demonstrates beyond any doubt that in order to censor somebody, the law has to be known and understandable and not vague or capricious. By contrast, San Clemente has no censure law. This whole thing has been made up illegally. No court will allow this to stand. And so, what you've created tonight over our objections, first, an illegal meeting. It wasn't properly noticed. And then, you've, uh, the council has decided to, uh, change the, uh, um, chair, which is illegal under Rosenberg's Rules of Order. It, it says the chair is the mayor, and that's the end of it. Otherwise, at every single council meeting, we could take, selected, the council could select a different chair for every single item. That's not how it works. So, the council voted by three to one to overrule the stated procedure of the adopted policy of Ro- Rosenberg's rules. So, there is no ordinance that out, that censures anybody. Interference, humiliation, disrespect through speech is not a basis for censure. It's not a basis for anything. So, this isn't about the law. It's about payback. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson fights for transparency to eliminate wasteful spending and to support her residents that come to her to ask her to intervene or to assist them. So, clearly, this council has decided Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson must be stopped at all costs. Ms. Ferguson's emails to city manager to assist local residents are not interference. It is protected speech. Ms. Ferguson has never interfered with anyone. Asking somebody to do something is not interference. You won't hear from, from Kathy, you didn't hear from Kathy Ward. You won't hear from Kathy Ward. Then the city manager emailed Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson and said, you are interfering, you are humiliating, or you are disrespecting me. Not once. Out of those forty-nine pages, I haven't gotten through them, but I guarantee you, or I hope, uh, I'm pretty sure that there is no document in there that says that, or Kathy Ward would have raised it. So, here we are. Kathy Ward and the rest of the majority have decided that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson is embarrassed and humiliated and disrespected and interfered. But there's no, not a single email, not a single person testified, not a single person stated that she interfered. So, you have charged her in, uh, count one, interference, count two, interference, count four, interference. So, I guess interference is the name of the game, but there has been no interference. At least the people who were supposedly interfered with didn't feel they interfered with. They believed that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson did what each of you does all the time, which is go to the city manager and ask them to do something, ask them to assist you or, or, or a resident. But in, in, in this case, it's not okay. As far as the document, the claim by Mr. Matchinoff, the lawyer for the Joint Powers Insurance Authority is a woman named Liz Kessel. Liz Kessel specifically informed the council and Scott Smith that the claim could be released, that it was not protected by the Brown Act. It was a public document. So, that item is done. It's over with, and Scott Smith can verify that. Whether it should have been released or not released, uh, is a matter of opinion, but it's legally allowed to be released. As far as Gene's statement of it cost a, a huge, uh, settlement, well, I'm a public member. I don't know what the settlement amounts were. I don't know what the claim was for, except that the demand was, I believe, in the letter, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Gene knows how much that settlement was for. That was the minimum claim. Gene, I hope you tell us tonight that that was paid more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars because that would have been a cause of a, of a, that the letter released, even though legally released, might have cost more. So, I want you, you asked Laura to say something tonight. I want you to tell the public that more than seven hundred and fifty thousand was approved for settlement. Okay? If you can't, then you need to take back your disparagement of Mayor Pro Ferguson causing a huge increase in the settlement amount. The second document is a voter opinion survey. The results were sent to the city manager in March two thousand twenty. It was not until months after it could be used to place a measure on the November ballot that it was released in August. Council was never given it in an open or closed session. Council didn't use or have any need for the survey. It was already too late and too old and for a release. And like I said earlier, I believe, the only standard for not releasing it is it would chill future deliberations. But understand something, before any deliberations would take place in open session, which is where they would have to take place, the survey would have to be released as a public document. So, there is no basis at all for saying that Laura Ferguson could not release that document. As far as who took that privilege, an email that I've read in the last few days said that it was taken by a staff member. Uh, no indication anywhere that it was taken by, uh, by the city manager. And then you have to ask yourself, who provides the city manager that position that he and he alone gets to take that privilege? Normally, it's taken by, uh, BB and K through Scott Smith and his, and his people. Um, having said that, the remedy for release of, of a document or that is to go to court if you'd like to and charge a misdemeanor. Go to the DA. Please go. That's a, a, a remedy that I know has never been used. Or to go to court and ask that it not happen in the future. This council instead, knowing there's no violation here, just piles on and, uh, and asks for a censure.
I think council, I think we're at the fifteen-minute mark. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, about censure. Scott Smith and I went back and forth. Scott Smith has said in writing to you that this is a common law remedy. Censure is not in the common law, doesn't exist in the common law. Scott was unable to give me any reference to common law. And even if it was the common law, what are the elements for censure? Scott Smith, I asked him for the elements. That was not provided either. It isn't the common law. Just so everybody in the city knows, it's a Catholic canon law. And in San Clemente, we don't apply Catholic canon law. But even if we did, we would have to know what the rules are. We don't know the rules. Laura Ferguson is being charged with what's called ex post facto, after the fact. What she didn't know and was never told is, if, if there's censure in California, uh, what's the rules? Well, in San Clemente, what's the rules? Well, we don't know. You're making them up as you go along. So, in, in other words, they could make bad breath censurable right now under these rules. So, I think everybody should go around, smell everybody else's breaths six feet away, please, and determine if anybody else in this council should be censured tonight. These charges are nonsense. No laws were violated. And, and interestingly enough, nobody stated the law was violated. Not once was there any evidence that any laws have been violated. You don't censure people for opinion, for, for being aggressive for their residents, for protecting them. You notice what was also not said, not one thing that Laura Ferguson is being accused of, and nourished to her benefit. This was her hard work, spending her free, few minutes of spare time. She's a full-time employee. She raises two boys. And you are concerned that she goes and tries to help, help improve the city of San Clemente and help the residents that need concern, and you want to censure her when no laws were violated and no laws of censure are violated because, as we told you, there were no, uh, uh, censure laws in place. Scott's going to tell you if he gets a chance that, yes, the city council can censure somebody under a case called Braun versus City of Taff. That case was about disclosing a document that was supposedly privileged, according to the city council. That case overturned the censure and sent it back to the trial court to see if the document was privileged or not. But what's critical is nothing in that case discussed that the city did or did not have a censure ordinance. The issue was not whether the person could be censured. So, the whole issue that a city can censure somebody because of, of Braun versus City of Taff is wrong because that case did, didn't discuss that. And Scott's, Scott's handbook, the California Municipal Handbook, states the same as I just did, that that's not what that case stands for. But Scott will likely repeat it because he's repeated it in writing to me. While this council will likely vote three to one to censure Mayor Pro Ferguson tonight, and I hope Gene stays true to his word and after hearing me will vote not to censure her, she violated no laws, no regulations, and no policies. With the assistance of former BB and K paid attorney- With the assistance of former BBK paid attorney, formed by the city manager's discretionary fund, the majority has been represented by Christina Tally. We've asked her to recuse herself, and she has refused, yet she was a deputy city attorney in San Clemente, a five-year associate and of council at Best Best and Greger, and therefore she gets the taint of Scott Smith, and the reason she's serving as independent counsel to the three-member majority is because Scott Smith and BBK can't, nor can Christina Tally, but yet she refused to recuse herself. As far as Scott Smith, we asked Scott Smith to recuse himself. He too refused. I guess there's some reason for that, but he wasn't fair, and you heard that already tonight, and you heard that every single thing we've asked for has been rejected by Scott Smith. He is clearly on the side of the majority. This started with him talking to Kathy Ward in April of last year, and it continues to this day. When we noted to Scott on the phone, and I believe it was Friday, that the notice was improper because it was adding an agenda item to an adjourned meeting, he went right away back to the city and told them, "Cure it, cure it, cure it," against my client's best interest. And we know she's a client of Scott Smith, because he takes attorney-client privilege for documents he sends to her. So he has violated, in my view, the rules of state bar, and at the least, he's violated the rule of staying neutral. I think this also applies to the fact that he allowed tonight, in his ruling, to violate Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which states unequivocally that the mayor is the chair of the meeting. That is not something that could be overturned. That, as we informed Scott, less than seventy-two hours, so no cure could be done, the only way to remove Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson tonight was through a notice action to relieve her of her position as Mayor Pro Tem. Since that couldn't be accomplished, Scott figured a workaround. That's not how it works, it's not fair, and it's not reasonable. Jean, thank you for serving as chair tonight, but it wasn't your job to do, and you weren't legally allowed to do it. You know, it's easy for the three of you to sit back and make false accusations, but the majority has to prove their basis claims. Where's the evidence? As I pointed out, there is no evidence. Will evidence even matter with this tainted tribunal? I don't think so. I think I can predict, I'm not cresting, but I think I can predict that the vote will be three-one on every issue. Neither Ms. Tally nor Mr. Smith recuse themselves, even though both were BBK lawyers. The decision tonight must be based on the evidence presented. You don't get to go into closed session and then bring up new evidence. The dog and pony show is going away present for Chris Hamm. Mr. Hamm delivered a Parthian attack by shooting arrows during his retreat. Good for you, Mr. Hamm, close the door on your way out. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson will not get a fair hearing tonight, we already know that. Not from Kathy Ward, not from Chris Hamm, and not from Jean James, and certainly not from Scott Smith. Her attorneys are working on ten claims that were presented to you tonight. We got the emails an hour or two before the hearing, and there were less than four days' notice, and you expect us to spend an hour and fifteen minutes summarizing this and producing evidence? That's not our plan, there is no evidence. There is nothing on the record that can be used to censure her, and censure is improper on its face. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson is proud of her service and knows this is a political sham and retribution and nothing more. I want to now move on to two documents that I have in front of me that haven't been presented because I actually got them from somebody on my staff at 5:40 this evening. One is the, unlike San Clemente, Stockton City Council has a policy manual regarding censure. I'm going to read the relevant parts. "In order to deter violation of law and serious violations of adopted city policy, the city council may take formal action against its members for such misconduct in the form of a censure. Censure is a formal resolution of the city council, reprimanding one of its members for specific conduct, generally a violation of law or a city policy, where a violation of policy is considered to be a serious offense." There's no evidence, by the way, parenthetically, that any serious offense took place. Nobody testified that any of these things were serious. So even if you had the Stockton Council Policy Manual, you would not be able to convict tonight. But it says, going back, but a censure is a punitive action that serves as a punishment for wrongdoing. I'm going to get back to it, but I want to state, parenthetically again, that that's all this is, is punishment. I would think that joins humiliation, disrespect, and all these other claims that are being made against her is what you are accomplishing tonight. Now, there was a procedure set in the Stockton Council. Two members could file a complaint, and they have to have specific allegations and supporting evidence that a violation of existing law or policy existed. None of that was done here. The mayor shall appoint a committee, so in Stockton, they appoint a committee to research this. The ad hoc committee shall review the allegations of the complaint, conduct whatever investigation they believe is proper or is necessary, and prepare a report and recommendation on the complaint to the full city council. There was no investigation here. We didn't get to participate in the investigation, provide witnesses, or do anything. Instead, this was pure sabotage on four days' notice. It goes on, "The committee shall determine if there are reasonable grounds to believe or not to believe the alleged violation of law or serious violation of adopted city policy occurred. The ad hoc committee shall make a written report to the council stating the specific law or policy alleged to have been violated." You will note, and again, parenthetically, you will note that not, nobody, not one single person, except for, I think, a policy on documents, but as far as free speech rights, not one policy was indicated to have been broken, not one law was indicated to have been broken, and nothing on anything was said to be serious. And that's if you have this statute and ordinance, which you don't. I go on. "The person against whom censure is sought is entitled to due process of law, which requires notice, an opportunity to be heard, including the opportunity to refute evidence against him or her. A hearing shall be enough to give advance notice to the member subject to the censure, adequate to review the allegations and evidence against him and her and prepare a defense, but no longer than thirty days from the date. All hearing and members shall be given an opportunity to be heard." An opportunity to be heard means unlimited time. Unlimited time wasn't done here. Laura, bring me your speech. Now, I want to go on to the Lake Forest, right up the street, censure policy. That requires that if a member of the city council is found guilty or liable by any court of law, enforcement agency, administrative hearing officer, or public agency investigation of violating a law or regulation as that term is defined in the policy, he or she may also be subject to potential censure. Well, again, this is a stated law. Now, let's discuss that. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson has not been found guilty or liable by any court of law, by any enforcement agency, by any administrative hearing officer, or public agency investigation of violating any law or regulation. No, it's not for this body to hear Kathy Ward go on for thirty-one minutes that Laura did this or that in these emails, and then censure her. Even under valid rules, remember, you can't even have this hearing in the first place. I find it interesting that one of the charges, and one of the pages in there, was an editorial I wrote to the city, to the newspaper, San Clemente Times, which was published, which stated that I believe that James Matchinoff's claim was improper, had no foundation, and he should not be paid. And apparently, and again, I haven't read it in detail, apparently, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson forwarded that to somebody or posted what I said. Either way, posting what I said in editorial is a First Amendment-protected activity, yet this is the bulwark of the claim against her? I find that difficult to understand, and I find it difficult to believe that anybody could find Laura, could find for censure based on that. The First Amendment requires the ordinance must have an ascertainable standard, must not be vague. Well, there is no ordinance. On a First Amendment basis, none of these claims could go through. There is no common law for censure, as we stated. Both of tonight's notices of meetings were flawed. They are, this is going to be overturned by a court, because as Scott Smith knows, the present notice of the special meeting, the last one, the one that I believe you are operating under tonight, has a statement in there, the pages three dash one to three dash eleven are attached. In fact, I ask all of you, while you're listening to me, to go to the city's website, to go to the special meeting, to click on that, and to find the attachment of pages three one to three eleven. They're not there, therefore, the notice is deficient, the public didn't have the documents they needed to review, and therefore, this whole meeting is out of order, and I ask for Scott Smith, since he is acting city attorney, to rule on the whole idea that this meeting had a right to go forward, because it didn't. Both notices were deficient. We're here arguing, but our position, and it will be in the Superior Court of California, is that if you censure Laura Ferguson tonight, you will do so, and it will be overturned on procedural grounds. Those procedural grounds include no censure laws, certainly, you cannot do a common law, if you could provide common law, as Scott Smith says, of censure, then I guess beheading is proper, burning at the stake is proper. No, what cities do is they adopt the common laws they want to enforce in their city. You don't get to look around, see if there's a common law that was violated after some conduct was done, performed, and say, "Oh, it's time to find you guilty of walking crick, walking backwards, skateboarding, whatever it might be." No, you have to have the law beforehand, which is why counsel, so much of counsel's time is used to establish policy and law. Finally, I think I want to go next to San Clemente Municipal Code 1.20.080, which sets the administrative hearing rules. We sent the city and city attorney the rule, and I'm going to read it to you. Notice of hearing requires the notice be provided for, I'm sorry, I'm paraphrasing, ten days, ten working days before the date of the hearing. Notice was posted on Thursday or Friday, November nineteenth, ten working days is December third. The first time this hearing could take place was December third. It was held prematurely and violated the mayor's clear due process rights to prepare for this hearing.
Brad, counsel, wait thirty minutes.
Thank you. Section 1.20.080 provides a, quote, "Any person requesting administrative hearing or appeal may request a continuance of his or her hearing date." On Mayor Pro Ferguson's behalf, and I believe she might have done herself, but either way, we requested a continuance. That's a matter of right, it was not granted. So this hearing could not go forward, and just so we know, I'm asking for a continuance when I'm done speaking, and that continuance has to last ten days. I'm requesting that continuance be ruled on immediately when I'm done speaking. It's consistent with 1.20.080, which is by clearly the minimum standards of due process in San Clemente. Now, Scott Smith may say, "I'm sorry, that section doesn't apply, it applies to fines." Well, I think punishments are worse than fines, and we know that this is a punishment. So we can quibble over whether this section, 1.20.080, applies to this hearing, but what we can't quibble about is that it sets the minimum due process rights. You will note there is also that administrative hearings, and Scott Smith said on the record that this was an administrative hearing, sorry, administrative hearing, under 1.20.080, a hearing officer is required to be appointed, but there was no hearing officer report over here. So again, we believe this violates all of her due process rights, because the city council in an administrative hearing refused to and did not appoint a hearing officer before this hearing took place. So how many rights were violated? Lots of them. The hearing rules of 1.20.080 also allow officer, I mean, offer testimony, evidence, and witnesses. I would like to now call as a witness Kathy Ward. So could somebody swear in Kathy Ward, please, for testimony?
(laughing) Good.
Could the same clerk swear?
That is simply not going to occur.
Well, I'm sorry, it's allowed in the administrative, he refused to allow me to call witnesses. Scott Smith said we'd be able to call witnesses, he knows we have the right to call witnesses, and I would like to call Kathy Ward as a witness. And Jean, if you're not going to allow me to, then you need to suspend this so we can go to court to get an order that we are allowed to speak, call witnesses. The floor is yours, Jean, to respond, or it's Scott.
Okay, Jean, that administrative procedure applies to people appealing code enforcement citations and lawyer.
But it sets, Scott, it sets minimum standards, and you, Scott, you can tell the people we talked about, you said we'd have the right to call witnesses, I even asked you about how we would call them and how that would go, and you said, "That's fine, you're allowed to call witnesses."
So I have a couple of questions for the city attorney.
I want my clock stopped, please, while.
Yeah, I was going to do that before you interrupted me. So clock, stop the clock.
Got it.
Scott, did you call this an administrative hearing?
No, well, I use the word administrative hearing, but it's not a code enforcement citation hearing. It's not, when I used that word, I was trying to make a distinction between a judicial proceeding, where you would call and cross-examine witnesses, where you could subpoena them, and this proceeding. And in that regard, it's administrative.
Did we agree to call witnesses?
Agreed, they could call their own witnesses and present them, but not that they could cross-examine council members.
But Scott, this is my, Scott, this is my witness. So we need to find, my witness is Kathy Ward.
I can't see Laura's face.
Kathy Ward is also a witness, she's not just a council member. I'm also going to call Scott Smith.
Simply, it's not going to occur.
Well, Scott said we could do it. So you're ruling for the chair, that agreement we have with your city attorney, he admitted, he said we could call witnesses, you're not going to now live up to that promise.
Absurd that I would ever construe that discussion to include this, Brad.
Well, construe, you didn't say, "What witnesses are you going to call, Scott?" I have the right, under California law, to call any witness I want. I'm not restricted to calling certain witnesses that I like, I'm allowed to call any witness. So I'd like a ruling, Jean, because I have the right to call.
I ruled three times.
Okay.
It's not going to happen. Turn on, turn on Mr., turn on the clock again.
Now, I'd like to call Scott Smith as a witness, then. Am I allowed to call Scott as a witness?
No.
Okay. Who am I allowed to call as a witness, Jean?
I was unaware that we're going to be witnesses today.
Well, you weren't supposed to be the chair today, but you are the chair, and I asked you a question, what witnesses can I call so I can prepare my defense of Mayor Pro Tem with limited due process?
This is not a criminal, this is not a criminal procedure.
I didn't say it was, I asked who I can call.
This is not even a hearing, this is a meeting of the San Clemente City Council.
You are the, you are the chair, who can I call?
No one. You can call Laura Ferguson, you can call Winston Law Group, and you can call Brad.
You're not, you're not, I know who's talking, but you're not allowed to talk, you're not allowed to talk, Chris. Chris, you're not allowed to talk. Chris, Chris.
Okay. Let's stop everyone, everyone, everyone.
Jean, I want time added because Chris is not allowed to talk. I didn't interrupt your presentation, Chris interrupted mine.
That's cause.
I just want to establish for the record that.
As a point of order, which I'm making right now, Brad, you're being very rude talking over me. As a point of order, I'm asking, I made a motion to have your time restarted, because you're not going to interview any of the three council members unless you want to interview Laura, which is entirely up to you at this point.
Mr. James, if I could interject here with this suggestion, in every hearing the council has, it's acting as fact-finder, and if participants are stakeholders in the hearing, want to ask questions of staff, even of council members, the council can note those questions and then decide as a fact-finder if it would like to ask those later. But as you said at the beginning, this is supposed to be under a time for a presentation to be made by Mr. Malamud and his side, and I don't think the way you described it, unless you want to revisit it as a council, it contemplated back in.
There will be no witness called. Please proceed, Mr. Malamud.
Thank you, thank you for that ruling. So for the court, the Superior Court that we're going to be visiting, I want to just put on the record that we have been denied the ability to call any witness whatsoever. I would like to also then put on the record that what we heard from Kathy Ward, Chris Hamm, and Jean James was pure testimony. You interviewed and witnessed yourself, you testified ad nauseam, and now you will not be cross-examined. You did not produce evidence. Chris Hamm went on a diatribe about Laura as a person and what she did. There is nothing in the agenda report, he was out of line, because there's nothing in the agenda report about her personally or what she does. There were ten specific clauses. Jean, you did the same thing, and yet you won't let me cross-examine you, fine, I will move on, but I just want everybody in the public to realize what a kangaroo court this is, how every rule of due process has been used against. how every rule of due process has been used against Laura Ferguson by Scott Smith and now by Gene James. Fairness is the bulwark of how we decide stuff. And Scott Smith said he didn't use the word administrative, any kind of hem and hawed. The first time this got addressed, he said this would be an administrative hearing. Now, when it doesn't serve his purpose, it's no longer an administrative hearing. Gene says it's not an administrative hearing. That's all this is, is an administrative hearing set forth in the council. I'm disturbed by the righteous indignation of the three of you that Laura Ferguson needs to just shut the F up. I'm sorry to be that blunt, but, and I'm speaking for myself in my comments tonight. I did not clear them with Laura Ferguson. I did not clear them with my co-council. But I sat through years of this council, and I've sat years of Chris Hamm's disrespect for Laura Ferguson, for Chris Hamm kicking Laura Ferguson, and for other things like that to go on. She's never gone public, complained, or done things like this. She's been, she's been exactly what we are supposed to be, a respectful council member. Yet Chris Hamm goes off on how everybody doesn't get along with her, and therefore it must be her fault. With all due respect, Chris, even if you're right, that wasn't agendized for discussion tonight. You can have that opinion. You could say it in public. You can print it in emails. You can blast it in the newspaper. You could take advertisements. But it's not subject to deliberation, and it's not evidence. And I think you should talk to Christina Tally. She should have objected at the time, on behalf of the public, that you were outside the scope of what we're discussing tonight. And it was a personal attack. And under the rules you've set forth tonight, if you convict her, if you will, of censure, all three of you need to be, need to be convicted and charged. I would recommend against it. I believe in the First Amendment. I believe you can talk and say whatever you want. If you believe it's right to disparage her, then go ahead and disparage her. But there's no law against that in San Clemente. So apparently, you're going to vote three to one tonight to find that Laura Ferguson did exactly what all three of you did repeatedly during this council meeting. Now, I think I've handled that everything was either a privileged release or privileged protected free speech. Where I'm going to reserve some of my time, and I'm going to turn this over to my co-council, Mike Winston, to give you maybe a little more things that I've missed or that are important. But I would like to say one thing before I did that. I know I'm not allowed to question you, but I will ask this. I prepared two or three letters to the council, very lengthy letters. Mike Winston's prepared a number of letters to the council. You're deliberating. We were told by Scott Smith, those will be part of the record. Therefore, they need to be read, reviewed, and understood by the finders of fact, in this case, the four council members. I want each of you to tell Ms. Ferguson's, before you vote on her, that you have read those documents, that you understand them, that you understand our arguments. And let me explain to you, that our arguments are procedural. We have not tried to refute what you've stated as far as factual basis because none of those are crimes, none of those are illegal. Nothing that you presented in those 49 pages violates any city policy that you cited. So, and as far as the one policy you did cite, let me address that quickly. You said that Laura Ferguson tried to force the city manager to include an item on the agenda. The item itself is Code 4.5.1, I believe, or policy. And it says that the, paraphrased, "The city manager and the mayor shall work together to set the agenda." Together. Words are clear. They have to work together. Kathy Ward will tell you in deliberations that that's not how you interpret plain language. You interpret it to be that the city manager sets the agenda, and he talks about it with the mayor, but he sets the agenda. No, that isn't the policy. The policy is clear. It's written, and it's not subject to interpretation. So what Laura did by asking that an item be put on the agenda, the city manager doesn't have to put it on the agenda, but he has to listen to her, and they have to work together. And when he decides not to put it on the agenda, and Laura wants to have it on the agenda, that's not working together. The city manager puts things on the agenda after he speaks to the Mayor Pro Tem and without her having any input into those items. The person who violated the policy is the city manager. Laura didn't go to the public and say anything. Laura didn't complain. But you guys are complaining because, oh my God, this city manager, I mean, this city council member had the audacity to say, I want something on the agenda. And he went to the city manager and asked in their meeting before the agenda set to include it. That's again, protected speech, and it's actually what the policy says. You can't convict her for following policy. You can't reinterpret that policy. So if you're going to try to convict her, that, please, do me a favor. Read that policy into the record. Okay? Let the public know that you hate Laura Ferguson so much that you are going to redefine plain language of cooperation into you can't tell, you can't even ask that something be placed on the agenda. With that, it's clear that you don't have the right to have this censure hearing. There is no issue of censorship in San Clemente. It was not adopted. Oh, and another point. The reason we know censorship doesn't exist here is because in 2017, the city of San Clemente had an ethics policy. As I remember, the city council believed it was being abused by one of the citizens who kept making ethics charges against council members. In fact, two of them who sit on the dais today, I believe. Be that as it may, the city council voted to eliminate a city ethics policy. Now, remember, censure is an ethics policy. Therefore, by definition, it was eliminated along with the ethics policy. There is no standard left in the city. There's no ethics policy in the city. So for all those reasons, this kangaroo court has to come back with an 04 vote against, against adopting the resolution. On the resolution side, as you were told, the resolution was put on the agenda by Christina Tally. She wrote the resolution. When I asked Scott why Christina Tally wrote the resolution, he told me, well, I couldn't write it. I'm one of the parties. But she, he did not come to us, Scott Smith, the neutral, did not come to us, Laura Ferguson's counsel, and asked, would you like to put a resolution into the policy and put it and include it on the agenda? No, the posted agenda had, did not have a resolution finding in favor Laura Ferguson because Scott Smith, a neutral city attorney, didn't ask the other side the same thing he asked of Christina Tally for the majority. How is that fair or equal treatment? It's not, and it's again, another indication of the due process violations that occurred. So I'm going to turn this over to Mike Winston.
Mike and Brad, while your changing seats are off, we're just two minutes short of 45.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hello? Okay. My Bluetooth is low on charge, so I may have to switch to my regular microphone, but I'll try to avoid that. Scott, how much time has been used or left?
We're almost at 45, two minutes short of that.
We have 30 minutes left.
That's right, Mike.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Brad. I'm going to take a different tact here, and I'm going to ask you to pull out the notice of censure hearing, pull out the draft resolution, because that's where I'm going to speak. I'm going to go down each one in turn and explain to you why they're not actionable. They're not grounds for censure in our country. First of all, in the notice of censure hearing, A, interference, the powers and duties of the city manager. This, and then you have two sub-items. A, attempting to influence the city manager's decision to terminate a public contract. Now, if you look at the resolution, which presumably is informed by the notice of censure hearing, talks about the contract for Rod's tree service. Then if you look at the evidence that Ms. Ward was referring to tonight, she completely misrepresented what it was all about. She called it in order from Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson to reverse your decision. Well, that caption on that email trail was started by a constituent who used that caption. And that caption was not changed when it flew back and forth between Mayor Pro Tem and the city manager for discussions. So let's be accurate here when we're talking about evidence. She also didn't question his decision to terminate the contract with Reed's Tree Service, Rod's Tree Service. If you read the email, and details are important here, she is asking for some consideration for Rod's to have more than 14 days' notice to move its equipment off the city lot that it's used for 40 years. And it wasn't a direction. It wasn't a limiter. It was a request. And it was taken as a request by the city manager. If you read the back and forth, frankly, the email is completely professional, completely courteous both ways, and there's nothing wrong with it. It was completely about board and profession, and frankly, a model of how a city council member should be representing their constituent who's got a concern that she wants to take up with the city manager. You call it attempting to influence, which means you recognize she didn't influence. You know what? The city manager is the highest ranking or pay official in this city. Whether it's Mr. Sun now, or Mr. Maxinoff before, or Mr. Dunic when he was the interim, they're highly educated, they're highly trained, they get paid a lot of money, and we as constituents expect a lot out of them. So should the city council. The fact that they, from time to time, have to deal with some heat in the oven and some hot oil in the frying pan, that comes with the territory. And every case that has considered this issue, as Mr. Smith has noted, says, because of that position and because they're public officials, then they have to take whatever public criticism comes their way. And that also extends to when Mr. Sun was the ACM. He's clearly a public official in that same category. So that, that grounds gets tossed under the First Amendment because it's factually false. The second ground, criticizing the city manager for us erecting a fence during the COVID crisis. Half of the city was criticizing the city manager. Mr. James was out there criticizing the city manager. He was pleading with him to also take down the fence. That's on YouTube. We all watched it. Why aren't you censuring him? That wasn't criticizing the city manager. It was asking, if you read those emails, they were professional emails appealing to him under his powers as the emergency director, whatever the right phrase is, during the COVID crisis, to please take down the fence. Now, Mr. Dunic, in my view, copped out because he certainly had the power to do that. Instead, he said, oh, no, I'm not going to touch that. That goes to the city council. Okay, well, eventually it did. After a lot of consternation and public turmoil and national press, the city council undid that decision. But again, criticizing Mr. Dunic for that, completely privileged under the First Amendment, as Scott Smith just told you. So that entire graphic censure, A, A and D in your notice, one, two in the draft resolution, gone. Next, B, again, interference with the duties of the city manager. You can see a theme here. Publicly questioning the, or challenging the decision to hire a recruiter to fill the open position of Deputy Public Works Manager. Well, I don't recall if there was documentation for that in here, but if there is, look at it closely. And because all of Ms. Ferguson's emails are professional and appropriate, that one will be too. In fact, the reason the people who voted for her, elected her, was to question when funds are improperly expended. Hiring a recruiter costs extra money. We have an in-house HR staff that recruits all the time. She was suggesting they were perfectly capable of doing that, and the city could save the money of hiring a recruiter. Turns out, if you dig a little deeper into that email, that the whole thing, I think, turned out to be a non-issue because the recruiter who was trying to get the job had just posted it on their own volition, and I believe they were not retained. So to the extent that there was some questioning about hiring a recruiter, it wasn't done because you know what? Again, the city manager, highly trained, highly experienced, highly paid, to make decisions. And they make their own decisions. They don't say, yes, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, I disagree with you, but I'm going to follow your order. That's not what happened. They consider her input just like they hopefully consider input, hopefully provided by every other city council member, and then make a decision. So why are her decisions questioning, or her requests questioning and challenging when the others aren't? B2, publicly criticizing the assistant city manager and accusing him of falsely impersonating as a city council member. First of all, absolutely privileged speech under the First Amendment, again, and we all know, because you've, you've read the post, they're in that stack, that she was told by an RSVP volunteer at that ceremony, that that gentleman who she identified as Mr. Sun in that spot, said he was on the city council, and he were like that spot. Okay? Could be a misunderstanding. I don't know. She brought it forward, it was investigated, and it was dismissed. What's the harm? There was no harm. Absolutely privileged. I, as a constituent in this town, I want my city council people exercising their powers of oversight over the city manager, whether they're part of the majority or not, especially if they're not. That's what the First Amendment is all about. That's what the pages of case law that I've sent to every member of the city council and their lawyers about the First Amendment in the last few days stands for, and we'll see if they understand and follow. B3, questioning and challenging the city manager's decisions recording recruitment again. Well, I guess we're kind of repeating ourselves here. I want my city manager to be questioned by my city council people, and they think that they're spending money imprudently. Even when the city council person is wrong, they're allowed to ask the question. And they did. Or even if the question's ill-taken or based on a false assumption. But you know what? The city manager can respond by explaining how they're operating under a false assumption or why he's making his decision, why he disagrees, and why he recommends or has decided to go in a different direction. So again, questioning and challenging, First Amendment, gone. That disposes of B. C, Mayor Pro Tem disclosed confidential information from closed sessions. No, this council and a city attorney, and hate to even say it, because what little I know of Scott Smith interpersonally, he's a nice guy. I wish him no ill will. But professionally, I disagree with a lot of his advice. And this one, he's just wrong. That city survey was never brought up and discussed in closed session, not once, not ever. Was it ever used under the guise of the deliberative process privilege? No, the council never once discussed it. Certainly not before it was released. And you all know the answer to that. No, it wasn't. If you did discuss it, point out to the public watching which agenda item on which day lists the survey. I've looked, it doesn't exist. If there was a discussion about it, completely illegal under the Brown Act. The Brown Act is very clear. Just because something is discussed in a closed session doesn't mean it's confidential unless there's a legal basis for why it's confidential. This survey, let's see. City attorney's staff and staff raised deliberative process privilege. Well, it was never discussed by the city council. It was never intended to be discussed by the city council. No assertion of privilege. And it's not an absolute privilege, it's qualified. So it has to have chilled somehow, to have chilled anything. And tonight I heard something new. Somehow, that's tied to the lawsuit with the emergency shelter coalition? First time that was ever raised. No, it wasn't. That was never enacted for that lawsuit. I think it predates the lawsuit. Factually disingenuous grounds. Attorney Ward products, Scott Smith? Attorney work product, Scott Smith? You know that's not attorney work product. Not one word. There are no reflections in that document of any attorneys, including yours, thoughts, processes, strategies, completely disingenuous assertion of attorney work product. Uh, B two, making contact with opposing council impending litigation. Well, she's a grown woman enough to be candid that, yeah, she called that lawyer to ask a couple of innocent questions about whether she had received information from the city. There was no prejudice, no discussion of substance, no Benedict Arnold behavior, nothing like that. She had never, ever been trained by the city attorney or the council not to do that, or the, the CJPIA. Now, the CJPIA did write a letter expressing its preference that she not do that, and she has not done that since that letter came in. It wasn't an order, it didn't jeopardize coverage, it had nothing to do with anything about how those claims were resolved, if they were. Again, D, interfered with, well, may not be the best judgment in the world, but protected by the First Amendment. E. And you know what? This whole question of prior due notice of what's right and what's wrong, that applies to that one also. No prior notice that that was wrong, because she had asked for a briefing about the CJPIA, uh, rules, so to speak, never provided to her. E, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson attempted to direct the city council manager, again, without authority of the city council, and made complaints of insubordination. Communicating to the city manager by each individual city council member, completely permissible. It's not an attempt to direct the conduct to the city manager. The, uh, complaints that she made that are the topic of this, uh, item were made privately, as I believe. Again, we received this evidence, uh, an hour or two before this hearing. But again, completely permissible, completely privileged, certainly not actionable, not grounds for censure, when there is no censure policy, and no training, and no, uh, prior notice that some of that behavior might be frowned upon. Excuse me, I'm going to check my notes on that item before I leave it. Okay. Enough said on that one. Again, attempted to direct? She didn't direct. She's being accused of attempting to do something that didn't happen? Agreed. F, again, we get back to criticism of the city manager and assistant city manager. Do I really need to cover this again? I don't think so. Uh, Scott Smith has covered it. He's told you that that's privileged. Uh, Mr. Malamute has, has covered some of that. Uh, I'll move on. G, I mean, F gets disposed of. Goodbye, dismissed. G, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson attempted to engage in a serial meeting with members of the city council in violation of Brown Act. Well, this is where you really need to look at that email that Ms. Ward provided you, and read it for yourself. She doesn't attempt to ask the, uh, city clerk or the city manager to poll the city members on anything of substance. What she does is ask them to poll the city council to see if that item being, uh, mentioned, whatever it was, can be agendized for public meeting the appropriate way. That's how items get put on the agenda all the time. That's how this meeting got put on the agenda as a special meeting Saturday. An email went out to all four city council members by the city clerk, I believe, saying, "Do you support, uh, calling this meeting as a special meeting?" Well, did she or the city manager, the interim city manager, or the city attorney who directed or asked her to do that violate the Brown Act? No. It's no substance. There was nothing agendized. Well, according to their view of the world. I disagree with that. But on G, there was nothing agendized that was pending for a vote. It was asking for an agenda item. She used the word poll. In the future, she'll probably use a different word, but completely innocent and appropriate. G goes out the window. H, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson questioned the endorsement of a political candidate. Factually false. She did not interfere with the rights of the employee association to, uh, endorse the candidate they endorsed or consider any other candidate. What she had asked of the city manager was basically, "Can you confirm to me that that was not done while they were on the clock using city funds?" Because you know what? It's illegal to use city funds for political purposes. Which raises the question about this whole proceeding, which is admittedly got one purpose, political. How is that legal? How is that permissible? I would suggest that the moving party should be charged for everything going on here, uh, related to this proceeding last week and this week, because it's using my taxpayer funds and yours, those of you who are living in San Clemente and paying property taxes, for political theater. Completely illegal and improper.
I know, Rob. My counsel, we're at the one-hour mark, just to know.
Fifteen more minutes, right? Okay, thank you, Scott. I, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, uh, disclosed information to the media. Oh, by the way, back to the previous one. H, the, uh, dealing with the association. How was it that the inquiry to the city manager, Mr. Maxinoff at the time, ended up getting given to the association? I don't know. I wonder. I wonder why. And then the association writes a letter, and, uh, Mr. Smith writes a letter back, probably a letter that, uh, his firm has used a hundred times, probably didn't take a whole lot to customize it for this situation, saying, "Uh, of course we respect the association. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll, to the extent that something improper occurred, not that he didn't admit anything improper occurred to the extent it did, we'll, uh, make sure it doesn't happen again." The fact of the matter was, there was no unfair labor practice filed anywhere. The whole thing was over in one week, took up, uh, you know, an hour's worth of collective time, and it was really no big deal, certainly immaterial in the life of the city. Section, uh, I, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson disclosed information to the media regarding a public opinion poll that you and I paid for, with our tax dollars, by the way, that this city council and the city attorney decided we were not entitled to see. Well, the survey, which I addressed before, but here it is again, um, had nothing to do with anything privileged, had nothing to do with Mr. Smith's work product, legal advice, legal strategy. Um, it was not tied when it was ordered and delivered to a lawsuit. That's after the fact fiction, six months later, tonight for the very first time. The work product objection that was raised earlier was vague, and certainly not tied to that lawsuit, and never really explained. Didn't matter if it was explained or not. Again, here's what happened. BB and K paid the opinion pollster, what, twenty-five thousand to do this? Of yours and my money. The pollster delivered a document PBK passed along. Had nothing to do with anything that was pending, had to do with potentially putting something on the agenda about taxes due, uh, on, on the election for us to vote on, uh, but had nothing to do with any legal work that the attorney provided. Just, uh, again, factually false assertion of privilege. Uh, if we actually go to court over it, easily overruled, as this I should be. Again, how is it confidential? Where was it discussed? What closed session agenda are you going to point me to? Can't wait to hear the answer to that one. Doesn't exist. Even without the assertion that it was somehow covered by the Brown Act and was just plain old confidential, those privileges are not well-taken, not factually founded, and certainly there was no chilling effect on anything, since it was never discussed by the council.
Scott, can you do like a five-minute countdown so he knows where he is? Every five minutes so he'll know where he is.
Thank you, Councilmember James. Uh, so that one, gone, dismissed. J, last one. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson attempted to unilaterally direct, and again, an attempt that wasn't completed, the city council agenda in May nineteenth, oh, the agenda dated May nineteenth, by demanding matters be placed on the agenda in conformational provisions of that policy. Well, go read the agenda, please. You all amended it as of January 2020. I think it's a settlement of that, uh, lawsuit with the, the yellow notepad with the, uh, late-grade, uh, Mayor Schwartz and that whole unfortunate thing, to specifically say, "The agenda shall be set by the mayor and the city manager in conference." That means in collaboration. So, to attempt, to say that she attempted to unilaterally direct the agenda? Well, that's her job. And you know what? The city manager basically did what he wanted to do anyway. So, um, you know, what is that all about? It certainly didn't violate policy that she should exercise, uh, good judgment, sitting as the mayor pro tem and a city council person in this city, under that policy to try to influence what's on the agenda. J gets dismissed. Whole thing, waste of time, protected by the First Amendment, factually false. I'm going to turn my remaining time over to Mr. Malamute. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, can you hear me? Um, I'm going to try to focus on one last point. This, this, the due process violations are laundry list for a law school.
Mr. Malamute, you're on mute.
Hello, can you hear me now? Hello? Okay, thank you. That, the due process violations that have been, that have occurred in the process and tonight should be made a law school exam or a doctoral thesis. But I'd like to suggest the clearest due process violation of all. On November seventeen, we, uh, watched the hearing. I, I watched it, and I saw that Christina Tally was at the council meeting for item nine C, and I couldn't understand why. The item was a simple item. It was to give guidance to the, to the staff regarding censure policy. There was no majority or minority. It was simply to provide guidance. Yet the simple, the city hired an attorney for council members James, Hamm, and Ward. Why did they need a separate attorney, an independent attorney at that? Well, there was no reason. Nothing was agendized that required it. That's how we know that the fix was in. Christina Tally should testify tonight to this council why she was there, why she was representing the minority, and worse yet, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson was not informed that the city was spending money for Christina Tally to illegally, improperly, and unethically represent the minority without informing the minority that she was there for that purpose. Scott Smith didn't tell anybody either. And when I asked Scott Smith, "Why wasn't Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson providing an attorney?" He said, "Oh, she wants an attorney?" What is, whoops, what happened? Hello? 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 Um, I lost the hearing.
I can hear you, Brad.
Thank you. I, I can't hear myself, but that's okay. So Scott asked, so I said, "Yes, she wants an attorney, one paid for by the city, just like the majority." So, a demand was made for an attorney provided at the expense of the city for the, for Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, the minority, just like one is, is tonight and was prepared for the majority. To date, the city has not responded either way. Yet, Government Code Section eight twenty-five and nine ninety-five and due process, because this, the majority had an attorney paid for by the city, all require that the city provide an attorney for Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. Well, I would like the city to inform Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson tonight whether they'll be reimbursing her or paying for, I'm sorry, for paying for the, uh, attorneys that have been representing her since November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, and will continue to represent her in this absolutely sham of a political kangaroo court. Now, Mike went through the litany of, of what was presented against her, and I think he, unemotionally, unlike me, presented a very good case, that there isn't a single item that's been presented, a single claim, that under constitutional law, uh, is a valid exercise of her First Amendment rights, or that she didn't violate any law or statute.
Good work, size.
It, thank you. It is also interesting that I think, unless I misheard, that Mr. James said that employee rights are constitutional. I would just, I'm not a, you know, a trained constitutional lawyer, but I think Scott Smith will inform you that those employee rights are, are not, uh, constitutional, they're statutory. I, I don't want to little pick little bones, but I think it's important that if you're going to charge somebody with something, the constitutional rights at issue here are Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson's First Amendment, and I believe we all know, freedom of speech rights. I think I'm right in saying those are constitutionally protected rights. I leave you with this. I expect the three members of the council to find that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson had violated all these rules, all these conflicts. But Mr. Winston, Winston has clearly told you that there were no violations here. There were no laws broken. There were no regulations broken. There were no policy that was broken. In fact, there is no censure policy in Cal, in San Clemente. There is no ethics policy in San Clemente. There is no, there is no censure rules in common law. In fact, there are no generally accepted elements of censure. What you didn't hear tonight from anybody is if you're going to find these charges are valid, then what you have to do is not only recite the facts under which you find that censure is proper, but you need to cite and designate and specify, one, that before Mayor Pro Ferguson performed any of these acts about which he's being censored, there was a law in place that Scott Smith can read to you what the elements of that law were. Like burglary is the breaking into a house at night with the intent to cause harm. Then you have to find facts that there was intent to break into a house at night to cause harm. I hope I have that one right. That's from first-year criminal law, not a criminal lawyer. But I think you get the idea. Well, so far, Scott's written agenda reports, written letters to us, he's talked to us. He hasn't been able to tell us that censure laws have any standards whatsoever. So what are those standards? What's the law? And how did Laura, Laura Ferguson know what those were? More important, I think he has to do something else. He has to show, somebody has to show, that she knowingly broke those laws. There has to be intent. I believe there has to be intent to knowingly break the rules. But there are no rules. How do you knowingly break rules that don't exist? So I challenge Scott, Mr. Smith, I'm sorry. I also think he's a good lawyer and a nice person, but we, we do disagree a lot, and we've had some fun over the years, Scott, and we've worked together a lot over the years. But I think he's wrong. He thinks I'm wrong. But I do think he'll agree that if, if more of, more of Pro Tem Ferguson has, uh, um, is to be censured, there has to be a law in place where she knew before she did the acts what the standards were, what the test is she has to have done in order to break those rules. So if you find that she's done everything you claim she's done, then the next thing you have to find is that she knew what those rules were. Yet Kathy Ward did not provide any rules that Laura broke. In other words, censure requires, for example, like I said, in the other cities, a knowingly violation of the law or a conviction by a group. Which one of those rules apply here? Well, the answer is neither standard applies there, because there are no censure rules in San Clemente. And Scott, you haven't, fine, I, I asked you this Saturday, what are the common law rules? What are those rules? Well, you haven't provided those, and you haven't told Laura that she broke them. And if you do provide them tonight, it'll be the first time that Laura or I or Mr. Winston have heard those rules. And you have to explain to this group how come expost facto doesn't apply? How you can convict somebody of censure when she and the public doesn't know? I mean, what could happen tonight? G. James could walk out of this council meeting and say, "That darn Scott Smith, he's no good," and he could be censured. No, he can't. He can speak to that like- He can speak to that like you said, you're an official, the city manager's an official. You can say, "I think he's the worst SOB I've ever dealt with." Well, he would be wrong. There's far, far worse than most of us. In fact, I happen to personally like the council members. I like sparring with Chris Hamm. You know, I've, I've had the pleasant New Year's Eve one-hour conversation with Kathy Ward at Ralph's. Personally, I like all of you. Doesn't mean we can't disagree on policy. Okay? Tonight, we have a disagreement on policy. But I think on the law, there is no disagreement. You talk to your city attorney, he will tell you that everything I've just said is right. Everything Mike Winston has said is right. And if you take all that evidence you have and put it in a bucket, you might as well burn it because it's not evidence that she violated censure rules that were established before the conduct, that were known to her and the public, and that she could have looked somewhere and seen what rules, where she crossed over the line. There is no line. Obama said, "The line in the sand, there's no sand and there's no line." I'm sorry, Scott, I know you said something, but I can't hear anything.
We're at time, sorry.
Okay, then I will stop. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. City Attorney, so we have agreed on, on 15 minutes of closing on each side. Where I'm unclear on this procedure is when do we hear from Ms. Tally? Or do we hear from Ms. Tally?
You could hear from her as part of the 15 minutes that the city council has, has left to discuss and, or not, it's up to the majority. She's prepared to speak to you to explain the resolution and any concerns she has about the issues raised on the other side.
Okay. So my question to Councilmember Hamm, Councilmember Ward, I would feel most comfortable with Ms. Tally going down this list and, and giving us her opinion on this list after hearing everything said tonight, this evening.
Okay, so I do want to question, so the city council is limited to 15 minutes left, Scott, of deliberations for presenting.
And advocating it, yes. At that point, your role will shift to reviewing the proposal and deliberating it.
Thank you. So that's my question. So Councilmember James, we will be able, we can have her do that, and then the council will be able to deliberate in what we think on the rest of it after we get that guidance. We aren't limited to 15 minutes to discuss what items or whether we're going to censure. Is that all right, Scott, right?
That's how I saw it, Councilmember.
Okay. So I, you know, this is a council meeting, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't giving up our time to discuss. I'll agree with that.
I'm, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'm sorry. So if you want, if Councilmember Hamm doesn't have any, any question on it, I would agree to ask Christina Tally to go through this list. I've already earmarked some, but I'd like to hear what she has to say.
Okay. Ms. Tally, are you available? Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Okay, Scott, start us on the 15 minutes, and Ms. Tally, if you could just go down Section 2, A through, I believe it is G or J.
Yeah, you know, I, I was listening, as I was listening to the presentation by Ms. Ward, and, you know, as I indicated earlier, I think Scott did a good job of kind of summarizing the law with respect to censure and its interface with the First Amendment. I was looking at the items that are set forth in Section 2, and I think that rather than going through that list the way it is, I'd kind of like to talk about what I see as some categories based upon the evidence that Councilmember Ward identified in her presentation. And I think one of the things that I saw in the evidence and in her presentation was with respect to the city manager's performance, while the city manager is a public official and he, because he is in that role, the council has the ability to offer criticisms in the public, and that is protected by the First Amendment. What I heard that the gist of the issue was, was that the Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson did not or chose to use that mechanism to address performance rather than following the city processes and procedures for not only addressing performance of the city manager, but the city manager's subordinates. I think failure to address those procedures is something different from offering public criticism on his performance. And so that's one category that I see. Excuse me, I have some notes here. There was a violation of the Brown Act, and there's two parts to that that I heard in Ms. Ward's presentation, and that was, one was the disclosure of confidential information from a closed session. I disagree that as a matter of law, every decision that's made in a closed session must be reported out. The Brown Act requires final decisions to be reported out. Councilmembers can discuss and reach consensus on matters that don't constitute a final decision, and in that case, it's not required to be reported out. Certainly, the performance, recruitment, evaluation, appointment of the city manager is something that's, can be discussed in closed session. So if there was a violation of information that came out of that closed session relating to the appointment or recruitment of the city manager, I believe that was the gist of that complaint. Similarly, if Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson engaged in conduct that would constitute a serial meeting and a violation of the Brown Act, that's also something that I believe would support a censure because it's a violation of state law. With respect to the matter involving the Joint Insurance Authority, while it may be true that a document that was released was not privileged as a matter of law, I believe what I heard in the presentation and in the evidence was that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson failed to cooperate with city's council in the defense of these matters. And the, the city has a duty to cooperate with its council, especially when it's being provided with counsel through the Joint Powers Authority, and so I believe that was the gist of that. Not that any statement was made to the public, but that there was a lack of cooperation which jeopardized the defense of that matter. With respect to the Myers-Millies-Brown Act issue, the publication, I don't believe there's a privilege to public, to publish information that constitutes a violation of the law or could be perceived as violating the provision of the law. I think the fact that the city attorney was required to send correspondence to clarify, number one, that the city had full intentions of complying with the Myers-Millies-Brown Act, and number two, that anything that Mayor Pro Tem Laura Ferguson said in that regard was a statement that she made on her own accord and not representative of the city, indicates that there was a real concern and a real risk of liability to the city for violation of that act. There was evidence and in Councilmember Ward's presentation about this interference with the city manager's responsibilities. The municipal code is clear in designating what responsibilities a city manager has versus the responsibilities of the city council, and he's responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city, he's responsible for the overall management of the personnel, to the extent that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson engaged in activities that would interfere with those municipal code delegated responsibilities of the city manager, that would be crossing over into his area in violation of the municipal code. Again, I, I think the gist of it is, as I heard from the presentation, not that these efforts on Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson's part were made public, that they were published on Facebook or anyplace else. The fact is that they're looking at the activities that she's engaging in, and those activities fall within the scope and authority of the city manager, not one member of the council. And then lastly, is the violation of the city's agenda policy. As I read the policy, as I understand, it's been interpreted by the city attorney to the council, matters go on the agenda one of two ways, with the concurrence of the city manager and the mayor, or Mayor Pro Tem in this case, or if there are three members of council who want something on the agenda. To the extent that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson is attempting to have matters placed on the agenda in contravention of that policy, that would be something that is subject to censure. So that's how I hear the presentation. That's how, and based upon the evidence that Councilmember Ward presented, my guidance would be to, if the majority is going to move forward with the censure, that they move forward based on activities and conduct of Mayor Pro Tem that's supported by the evidence, as opposed to any First Amendment expressions that she may have made in the public arena via Facebook or any other media.
Chair, Councilmember Ward, do you have any questions? Ms. Tally?
Let's see. No, I think, you know, the council, we can just go down through the line. So I appreciate, I appreciate that advice.
Councilmember Hamm, any questions to Ms. Tally?
No questions to Ms. Tally.
Okay. All right, I have no, no questions at this time. We'll turn the time over to Ms. Ferguson and her team.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate Ms. Tally's recitation of non-law. I, I don't know where, where this all comes from. It's, it's staggering to me that it was supposed to be a closing, and yet the chair asked everybody if they had any questions of her. It wasn't a cross-examination. You wouldn't let me question Christine Tally, but you actually said during this discussion, "Ms. Ward, Mr. Hamm, and you could question her." Just what you denied me one hour ago. Gene, you are showing your colors. And so has Scott Smith. He actually called Christine Tally the city council's attorney. No, that's what he thinks she is. That's what he is. Tonight, Scott Smith is serving as the city council's attorney, and Christine Tally is serving as the majority's attorney. You can't even keep the rules straight. I, I'm just, I'm sitting here and I'm boiling over. I'm boiling over, I'm not a trial lawyer, I'm just a person who unfortunately went to law school, but I at least learned basic laws. If you listen to Christine Tally's speech, it's protected. You can't, she agrees with us. You can't censor Laura Ferguson for speech. So here's how she gets around it. You ready? I hope everybody's sitting down. She says, "You can't, you, you, you have to base this on activities and conduct." Well, I don't know what law school we all went to, but activities and conduct are free speech. That's what's called holding up a banner. Stop the war. Allow marijuana, okay? Or just marching without saying a word. Those are activities. They're protected by the First Amendment. Sit-ins. I could give you so many activities. So, but let's be consistent, Christina, Ms. Tally, I'm sorry. If, if speech is not on the table anymore, as you said it's not, then all these emails that were put in are speech, they're off the table. There's no evidence left. Every document except for a few articles that Kathy Ward put in the record were emails. You, you admit with me, I hope, that emails are speech. And you said, "We can't censure her for speech." I agree, you can't. It's protected, and yet emails are speech. My publication in the San Clemente Times, which is part of that record, is speech, is protected. Mayor Ferguson's republishing of that or sending it to somebody is speech, is protected. So Ms. Tally, I hope you are consistent, and you tell them that they cannot consider any of the emails and evidence. So what evidence is left? Oh, that's right, none. You didn't produce, Chris, you didn't produce Eric Sun, who I would have also questioned, on whether he felt that he was ever interfered with. Telling Mr. Sun that you think he's doing a bad job and should do this, that, or that, or you believe that your constituents want him to do something, it's not interference. It's called being an advocate. I guess none of you have been to Los Angeles, or New York City, or Chicago, and listened to a council meeting. I guess you've never read a newspaper or the Washington Post about Mr. Trump, and I guess you've never heard Chuck Schumer talk on and off the Senate about Mr. Trump. Free speech. You can disregard, you could say, "I don't like that person. I think you did a horrible job. I think one of your jobs is to fire your, your subordinates. You need to replace all your workers." I would tell you that although I see he's not attending anymore, maybe he's just clicked off, Mr. Sun, as every, there he is, I'm sorry, Eric Sun respectfully has the right to do whatever he wants. The fact that he has the right to run the city is, Victoria, I'm sorry, Christine Tally told you is correct. But Laura Ferguson does not violate that rule. You said he violated that rule. She violated the rule by telling, one of the city managers could have been Matt Chitoff, could have been Sun, it could have been, it could have been, dude, what to do. That's not a violation. What rule is that a violation of, Christine Tally? It's not a violation of any municipal gold rule. In fact, you didn't cite a single municipal gold rule that was violated. Not one, not one. So what, what didn't we hear in your, in your dissertation on every single one of these 1 through 10 rules were violated? We didn't hear about ex post facto. You heard me go over that a few times. You didn't hear, you, you didn't tell us where we could find out what the censure rules are. What are the rules that are being applied? What was her notice? You didn't tell us that either. What are the standards for censures? That without an, without an ordinance for censure, this proceeding cannot and will not survive judicial attack. You didn't address that. And you don't get to talk in the next hearing when the council reclaims, or we get to talk. The same rules apply to everybody. Christine Tally's done, we're done. The council gets to talk. So where are we? There's been no violations, there's been free speech, that's it. The documents, Christine Tally has a rule around that too, just to let you know. I heard what you said about the, the claim document, the JPIA. I will, I will give up, I haven't asked her, but I'm going to give up an attorney-client privilege right now. Laura Ferguson and I sat at her home and called Liz Tally, the lawyer for the JPIA, and discussed the release of that document. We discussed it with Liz Tally because she's the one that held the privilege, not the city of San Clemente. And she looked at us and she said, "You may release that document. I would prefer if you don't, but you may release it. It's your absolute First Amendment right. It is a public document." Okay? Now you know that she didn't violate anything. So if you convict her of that, you have my testimony under oath that that's what was, that's what happened, that's what occurred. It was a letter. Christine Tally, have you read that letter? It was a letter to the city. There's no protection for that. It's a letter to the city, I'm making- I'm making a claim. Scott Smith will tell you, there's no protection. It's a public document. I don't know if you understand the duty of cooperation. Under an insurance policy, Kristi Natale's right. There's a duty to cooperate. But it's not what she's telling you. A duty to cooperate means if they come to you and ask you to testify, if they come to you and want to interrogate you or question you, you have a duty to cooperate. The duty of cooperation doesn't give up your First Amendment rights. Kristi Natale knows better. She knows what the duty to cooperate. Or if she doesn't, then she's misinformed. Okay? Chris, in fact, Liz told us that whether we release it or not, she's a good lawyer, she'll get the case resolved. That's what she does. She's been doing it for 30 years. Some cases are harder than others. So you want to, you want to charge Laura Ferguson with violation of something that she had a legal right to release the document? It doesn't violate the duty under insurance policy. And I want you to put in evidence where the JPIA sent a letter to Laura Ferguson telling her that she violated any duty anywhere to, under the insurance policy. She hasn't. You know that, Kristi Natale. You know that Kathy Ward. You know that Chris Hamm. And you know that James, Jean James. Now, you may have chosen not to release that, that claim, as if the public wouldn't find out about it when the settlement occurred. Okay? You weren't paying, didn't cost the city one penny. Didn't cost you coverage, and never would. So this is made up. This is the kangaroo court that you've made up tonight. As far as everything else, I think you should look inward, all of you. I know you truly hate Laura Ferguson. I know you don't like that she's been an advocate for the citizens of this town. Jean shaking his head, he knows what I'm talking about. Laura Ferguson was your biggest supporter, Jean. You can shake your head all you want tonight, but she was your biggest, she got you elected, Jean, and you know that, and I helped her. We all helped you. And Jean, we had great hopes for you. We still do. You're our, you're a city council member of the city. I hope you go on to great things. But tonight is the litmus test. Are you going to let your prejudices, all three of you, charge and convict this person? Are you going to listen and realize that there is no censure procedure in this city? So it doesn't matter what she did. It doesn't matter what action she took. None of you, no, none of you will tell us tonight what the rules of censure are. Forget the facts. We haven't defended the facts in great respect. We've defended the procedure, that there was no right by this council, no right to charge anybody with censure. Jean, ask, when you get there, ask Kathy Ward. Kathy Ward was, was pummeled unmercifully by a city, by a resident of this town. And the ethics roles were gotten rid of for that. And guess who supported Kathy Ward? Me. I stood in front of the city council and I said, "It's not right to attack anybody on that council." You know, personalities are not important. We need to stay on policy. I'm going to turn this over to Mike.
Backward, six minutes remaining.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
How many minutes left?
Six.
Thank you. I'm going to first address, and this may be my only topic in the six minutes, the issue of disclosing that vote from closed session on the discussion about whether to interview the candidates who submitted resumes, apparently, to the city manager position. So I understand that happened on June 2nd, 2020. I'd like someone to show me from that agenda, where it was agendized. It wasn't. Oh, there's an agenda item that says something about appointment interim city manager. Well, that might refer to Mr. Sun, and something to do with his appointment, but it certainly doesn't have anything to do with recruiting and appointing a permanent city manager. California Constitution, Article 1, Section 3B2, and only case law follows construing it, says that the provision to the Brown Act permitting closed sessions are to be narrowly construed, which means they've got to be precise. You can't play in the gray edges of those agenda items, which maybe that's what happened here. And you know what? Government Code, Section 59960.2, has a nine-month deadline for someone to send out a cease-and-desist letter and start a Brown Act case. So we're well within the timeframe on June 2nd, 2020. Maybe that should be done. The definition of action taken in Government Code, Section 594, excuse me, 54952.6, includes an actual vote by a majority of the members, considering it as a body, upon a motion. I understand what happened. There was a vote of a majority. In fact, the vote included everybody. I think it was a tie vote, but there's no exception to this action taken for tie votes. Just means that a majority of the council had to have a vote. Well, they did. And you know what? All those provisions about reporting out, it's termed in the Brown Act of, "You may take those matters into closed session. You may do this, you may do that." But you know what? If you take something in the closed session, that's not a permissible action to be taken into closed session. You have no right to hide that from the public. You have no right to hide the action taken from the public. In fact, that's a Brown Act violation. And you know what? Mayor Protem Ferguson saved you all, perhaps, from that Brown Act claim by reporting out that vote. And you're going to censure her for that? Give me a break. And I'd like everybody in the city council and the city attorney to remember this provision of the Constitution. I can send you more case sites if you want. These agendas have been narrowly construed, not thrown up there on a blackboard and say, "Oh, wait a minute. It says the word employee or city manager, so we can discuss anything about the city manager." No, looking at resumes that are de-identified, there was no specific name being discussed, and deciding whether to go forward and interview them or not, that's not a Brown Act activity in closed session. All those Brown Act categories are to deal with the employee union or specific-named employees. Doesn't qualify. And that's an example of the paradigm that's happening here. Operating on the fringes, the maybes of what the law are, might be, should be, could be, that are unstated and that have been made up today. The council wants to censure Ms. Ferguson. It's inappropriate on any of these grounds. If, as Mr. Malamud predicts, you're going to do it anyway, well, we've told Mr. Smith about all the cases where those things ended up in court, and one of his favorite cases, Ron, well, they, they reversed the censure. So do you really want to bring more litigation upon yourselves? Because you're all going to get named. That's a waste of time and money. Do the right thing. Think about this. You've made your point. You've publicly flogged Mayor Protem Ferguson. You've tried to sully her reputation. You've done what you accused her of doing, embarrassment and humiliation. Just dismiss this, let's get on with the business of the city. The holidays are upon us. Let's see your goodwill and your humbleness, and perhaps by showing that goodwill to Ms. Ferguson, instead of her having to pledge some oath to Mr. James, maybe you show the goodwill, and then everybody can get on with business, and the new council that will be seated next week can start afresh while having to deal with the mess that you left behind them, for them. Thank you. Do the right thing. Appreciate the time. Okay. City Clerk, public, public comments, right?
Yes. Okay. The first one is from Craig Alexander, and he writes, "This letter is intended to be presented, read, and made a part of the public record for the special meeting of the city council Monday, November 23, 2020, on the proposed censure of Mayor Protem, City Council Member Laura Ferguson. I am submitting you this letter via electronic mail and fax. As the city's online webpage method of communication, every public comment does not allow for the attachment of a letter such as this one. I request that you confirm receipt of this letter and that it will be distributed to the members of the council, read to the city council's public comments during the meeting, and made a part of the public record for the city council meeting. First category, proper notice of the special meeting under the Brown Act. I also note that as of 2:00 PM Friday, November 20, 2020, there is nothing on the city's website, including in its city council meeting listing page, for this special meeting, even though under the Brown Act, the city has an obligation to publish notice of this meeting and the agenda 72 hours prior to the meeting. Thus, I have no agenda item number to reference you. I suppose that the city does publish notice and the agenda for this special meeting by 5:00 or 6:00 PM today, it may have satisfied its Brown Act obligations, but that is questionable and certainly does not bode well for the city's duty of transparency to its citizens. In addition, I note that while a censure motion, agenda item, implies heated emotions on the part of the members of the council and perhaps the city management staff, nothing about a censure motion would fall under the category of an emergency situation that allows the city to not follow the 72-hour requirements of the Brown Act. In fact, it seems this entire censure motion and meeting, set just prior to one of the council members, Mr. Hamm, leaves the council, and prior to the swearing-in of two new council members, to restore the council to its full representation of five members, is being done for the sole purpose of satisfying anger rather than calm reasoning and good governmental policy. Second category, claims that the PR survey results are not a public record subject to disclosure. I would like to address one aspect of this censure motion issue, the claim that the survey results for the survey done by Adam Pabolski's firm is not a public record that could and should be available to the public and not subject to any exemptions. Of course, I refer to the California Public Records Act, which is a major area of my law practice. Next category, background. As I understand this situation, the former city manager authorized an expenditure of city funds $25,000 to conduct a survey of citizens' opinions. The invoice for this service from Mr. Pabolski's firm, Pabolski Research, was dated March 13, 2020. That is the three minutes. The next communication is from Stephen Marshall. I have never seen anything like this happen in this city's history, but this action to be considered tonight is unprecedented. It is too bad, but as Kathy Ward listed off her reasoning for requesting council to consider a censure of Ferguson, I was listening, and they were all true. I have never seen a council member so drunk on power to, so to openly admit to pursuing some personal vendetta against staff and plastered a private Facebook account with emails that may not necessarily be the public's eyes to see. Since Ferguson came on board, this council has turned into a circus. While entertaining at times, it really takes away from you all doing what needs to be done and what you were elected to do. And that is the business of the city. Laura purposely turning on her sound so that there was feedback when the female lawyer was trying to speak was the most childish thing I've ever seen come from, from the dais. This is not a legal proceeding and equates to a slap on the hand, as far as I'm concerned. But it is very symbolic, as no council member has ever been subject to this, I believe. I encourage you to pass this item tonight so Ferguson can wear her censure as badge of honor. I believe that's what she said. There is nothing honorable about this, by the way. We, the people, will do the rest when we vote her out in 2022. By the way, it's pretty evident she's in the TCA's pocket. The next communication is from Jim Dahl, and he writes, "Wow, what's happened to our city council? As a former city council member and mayor, I can't believe what's happening. A kangaroo court because three city council members don't like the way Mayor Protem Laura Ferguson has carried out her term on city council. Let's face, when she left city employee employment and ran for city council, the status quo started to attack her. She has exposed management misconduct and waste, and has tried her best to open city government to the citizens. She has been harassed by city staff and fellow city council members from the start of her term, and it continues until now. This is a disgrace and should be stopped." Next communication is from Michelle, her last name. Our family has strong support for Laura Ferguson to be censured to protect our city from further unprofessional and inappropriate behavior that will certainly lead to lawsuits. For the past two years, Ms. Ferguson has created a hostile workplace by publishing demeaning and condescending posts on Facebook about city staff. It is creating ill will and is undermining the governance of our city. Government Code, Section 81,000 clearly states that she, as our elected official, should serve the needs and respond to the wishes of all citizens equally. However, it appears that she is working solely for two individuals. She is helping them achieve their attempts to undermine city manager and city attorney. Section 81,000 also states that public officials, whether elected or appointed, should perform their duties in an impartial manner, free from bias caused by their own financial interests or the financial interests of persons who have supported them. When an entire city is opposed to the toll road coming through our town, are top of our children's schools, taking out up to 350 business and homes to add toll lanes to the by freeway, wiping out open space, and negatively affecting our beaches, Laura Ferguson has not approved one contract to help the city keep its TCA out of our town. In fact, at every turn, she has shared specific details with the TCA. As a strategy, it is terrible to let the TCA know what the city plans to do. It is certainly at the city's disadvantage. Ms. Ferguson was supported and got into office with the support of the TCA toll roads, as openly admitted by Tony Beal, longtime TCA director, at an open public TCA meeting. It is clear the support for her election is keeping her from representing the citizens properly. The inappropriate, unprofessional behavior is creating chaos, making our city less productive. By repeatedly sharing confidential information, she is also putting the city in jeopardy. Thank you to the city council staff, the assistant manager, and city attorney for all of your hard work. I am dismayed at the petulant behavior and the constant bullying you have had to endure while Ms. Ferguson has been on council. To Ms. Ferguson, please stop this unprofessional behavior."
Okay, so this one's from an anonymous person. Good evening. Censorship is long overdue in this highly unfortunate situation. San Clemente is well-run, has a balanced budget, caring city staff, managers, attorney, and council that work tirelessly to ensure we have first-class beaches, trails, sports parks, and are fiscally sound. Laura Ferguson's petty rivalries and resentments continually are a waste of precious time and are a risk to our city on multiple levels. The upheaval she causes at the city council meetings are an embarrassment while using transparency as an excuse for her poor behavior. Every professional knows that details of employees' information is private, that active legal matters are confidential, that trying to get every detail for contracts to protect the city against the toll road would be foolish to share at the TCA's watching. Most professionals understand that, and in the case with Ms. Ferguson's, it has nothing to do with transparency, the lunacy and what seems to be her desire to undermine the city of San Clemente. Within Ms. Ferguson's post, disparaging, demanding, bizarre post to Facebook demeaning city staff, the assistant manager, and other council members, the use of Facebook for bullying and harassment of city officials needs to cease. Ms. Ferguson is regularly creating a hostile work environment and eroding the trust we have in our government. Sadly, it is clear that Ms. Ferguson is not able to work with others. How is the city ever to get a decent replacement city manager when it is clear it is a babysitting job? She was a poor choice for a leader, leadership role when she is unable to think of anything other than herself and causing disruption. The cost to our city is real. With this reckless irresponsible behavior. As a standard, as she said at the last council meeting, she would sue the city. She ran on reducing legal fees, yet here we are, and she is threatening the city. Please censure her. Please censure her from this highly unprofessional childish behavior." Next one is from Nicole J. "What is happening is disturbing. When people ask questions, one documents false transparency, and Mr. Sun and his gang of followers will make an example of you. And there's such facilitate deaction being taken tonight. This is what happens when you want to look deeper into the facts and details. Mr. Sun's is clearly orchestrating tonight's effort. Mr. Sun has used this tactic with anyone who points to details and facts. This is a clear assault on everyone who voted for openness and transparency, as Mr. Sun thinks he can manipulate not only the voters by Hamm and Ward as well. Ms. Ferguson has not cost the city in losses from Mr. Sun's house. He enables a toxic hostile workplace, whereas Ms. Ferguson has exposed the abuse to hide important matters that are not confidential from the public. Anyone who speaks at City Hall or on the city council is labeled as difficult to work with or feels to get along. Anyone who tries to provide transparency is labeled as difficult to work with. When you look for details, you will have a certain problem, as Councilmember Ward states. Councilmember Ward and Hamm, you should be ashamed. You will only be used by Mr. Sun to faster this toxic environment." Next one is from Luz Bilal Vicencio.
Hey, can we stop? I'm getting a lot of text messages that we cannot hear you, and I can barely hear you.
I'm so sorry. Can you hear me better?
Yes, Joanne.
Okay, let me try to read more. The next communication is from Luz Bilal Vicencio. She writes, "My name is Luz Bilal Vicencio. I am the former human resources analyst 1-2. I served full-time for four years until January of 2020. I feel compelled to speak up and express my complete shock at the blatantly inflammatory and willful misrepresentation of material facts in this slanderous campaign against Laura Ferguson. Ms. Ferguson never interfered with the city manager's decision to hire a recruiter for the deputy public works director position because the city manager never made that decision. I did that recruitment myself in-house. It was requisition 1819-00035. Eric Sun knows this because he approved the requisition. That's just one example of a fabricated falsehood, and three minutes is very little time to address other accusations I know to be lies. If she ever expressed concern about spending tens of thousands of dollars in a recruiter, it was exactly what she needed to do and actually voicing the same concerns HR city staff had, including senior HR staff. We all knew those decisions were arbitrary and wasteful. I saw them hire a recruiter for a building official when the city had already successfully recruited one, Bill King, in-house only three years prior. That requisition number is 1516-00030. This council put a lot of work in these columnnes to feign concern about a city manager doing his duty when, in fact, you have refused to interview and hire a permanent city manager this whole year. The position has been vacant and in a year when the community needed leadership the most. Max Chenoff has been gone since January. Eric Sun is a disaster who just causes more problems, so he doesn't count. And you are condemning Laura for disagreeing with the decisions of the interim city manager when you yourselves chose not to extend his contracts, so clearly you weren't then impressed with him either. And now you've had an acting city manager without an acting assistant city manager for months. So obviously, you don't really need an assistant city manager. Yet you are condemning Laura for pointing out an assistant city manager is not needed. If you cared so much about how people are treated, you wouldn't have ignored the repeated pleas from rank-and-file employees to do something about how they are treated by the assistant city manager. You've had an employee survey, former employees speak at council meetings, and a newspaper publication calling you out on your indifference. You've had lawsuits and settlements, and you've done nothing. The circus just looks like a personal vendetta and retaliation by fellow council members against Ms. Ferguson for having the courage to call you out on your lack of principle and your hypocrisy. Shame on you."
Ms. Bate, can I ask a question? Councilmember James, I need to ask a question. That email was from what person? Can I have the name?
It's Luz, L-U-Z. Last name is Bilal Vicencio.
And at the beginning of the email, I believe she-
Excuse me, point of order. We're on public comment, and you're not allowed to interrupt.
And I need to know what the date was.
Unbelievable.
I'm just asking for clarification. Didn't she give a date when she was employed or she was-
She's making point of order.
Point of order. We are on public comment, and you're asking all this information about a speaker. We're listening to the public comments. You can wait till after.
Okay, I guess the rules don't apply to you with the Rosenberg rules of order and so forth.
Can you tell me, am I allowed to ask a clarifying question of a public comment before it goes by? I'm trying to get a timeframe here. It was stated in the beginning, and I didn't catch it.
Sorry, Mayor and Council. If that's included in the communication, then I think you can ask Joanne to read the remainder of the comment.
Okay, I believe Joanne, it was at the beginning where she identified herself. I just-
Yes, he's getting, "I am the former human resources analyst. I served full-time for four years until January of 2020."
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Proceed, city clerk.
That's my question. Thank you.
Okay, the next communication is from Patricia Hoskins. And she writes, "Dear Honorable Mayor Potem and council members, I worked with Laura Ferguson for many years at the city of San Clemente and can attest to her honesty, devotion to the people, and her desire to make decisions of the city transparent to the people of San Clemente. She will pull, excuse me, she will pull the curtain back on city decisions that are detrimental to the public good, employees who are working for their own benefit at the expense of the people, and other insider deals common in government. Alleged lack of respect. This hearing is retaliation for Mayor Potem Ferguson's audacity to question and challenge the authority of an interim city manager hired without full consent of the city manager or of the city council. The same city manager who filled in the skate park and fenced off the pier parking all the while choosing to ignore public outrage. Alleged insubordination. The staff are subordinate to the mayor and city council, not the other way around. By definition, it is impossible for the mayor or city council members to be insubordinate to the city employees. The organization chart for the city begins with the citizens who elect the mayor and council. The city manager, city attorney, and staff are there to assist and guide the mayor and council. Transparency will result in increased public trust in government and government decisions. I ask you each to vote to not censure Mayor Potem Ferguson and guard his trust." And the next one, the name just has the initial R. "Dear council members, at one time, I had supported and voted for all of you, every one of you. The behavior you're directing towards Mayor Potem Ferguson is horrific, and you cannot seriously believe that the majority of your constituents supports this censure circus. We elected you to represent us in city business not to use our tax dollars to finance our vendettas against one another. It's embarrassing and a waste of time, and to charge the taxpayer to stain and humiliate your fellow representative Mayor Potem Ferguson is scandalous. This is not a good look on you, council members. It's absolutely shameful. Just stop, and it's signed, disappointment." A long-winded, completely biased attack, a temper tantrum, and a complete- I feel stupider for having listened to it as I could almost hear my brain cells disintegrating while listening to such garbage. I'm in awe that we are wasting even more time by entertaining Kathy Ward's mindless banter by holding this special meeting. I suggest to immediately cancel this agenda and move on to something more productive that will actually benefit our city."
City clerk, I can't hear you. Hello?
Oh, went on mute. Let me try again. Okay, this email is from Martina. No last name was provided. "San Clemente has yet again become a subject of watercooler conversation and bemusement. After Fencegate and what became the viral story about plowing in the skate park like sands in the bowl, these are the COVID days of our lives. We have now sunk to a new all-time low. I wish mere words could convey how thoroughly I am disgusted by all of this, but I will give it a try. This is a show trial, a kangaroo court, as far as a travesty, a wasting government resources that in time will have the same posthumous vindication seen in the Salem witch trials. The audacity for this city and council to try and censure Laura is a cautionary tale to all of us. Should a council member who voted to get rid of the city's ethics policy be the face of this fiasco, or is it fitting? If the city and the people were so keen to censure city council members, why not start with Kathy Ward? Does everyone forget her being the inside source to the OC Weekly on the hit piece on Dan Bane only a short time before the 2016 election? Does everyone forget her using her personal Facebook page to disseminate the false allegations within that question? Does everyone forget her attacking citizens and falsely accusing them of being assigned to promote certain council candidates?"
You're back on your Joanna.
I don't know why that's happening. Okay, all right. Does everyone remember when Kathy was up for reelection in 2016, yet the city decided to have a no-toll road forum? When Kathy, who was on the TCA board, was designated as the speaker while other candidates such as Stan Bane were limited to being outside? It took citizens writing correct and cure letters to remedy this. Does everyone remember the numerous Brown Act violations by the city and council such as ordering the removal of people they found disruptive without giving them a cautionary warning? Does everyone remember Kathy Ward filing a police report against a local activist 10 months after an action that didn't even directly involve her? Does everyone remember council, with the exception of Laura, sitting quiet when all of a sudden the city decided to change the rules and had the sheriff order everyone out of the chambers and would only allow them reentry if they swore some sort of pathetic oath? Let's also turn a blind eye to lame-duck council member Chris Hamm. And when I say blind eye, what I really mean is if you blink, you will miss him since it's almost like he doesn't really exist, hence the name Bigfoot. Why is it only after COVID he has a fairly stellar attendance at council meetings but always and curiously has had his camera turned off? Where is he and who is he paying for it? Let's not forget Gene, best known for parking his truck up against a homeless man's tent, but in other concerning behaviors, he threatened to use the sheriff's department to intimidate private citizens, get information out of them. And this is just a short list. In closing, I think the city should have a new motto." Okay, the next one is from Ellen Hostetter, and he writes, "My name is Ellen Hostetter. I am a San Clemente resident. I write in strong opposition to this misguided, small-minded, and petty attack against Mayor Potem Ferguson. It is unconscionable for this council during a time of crisis in this community to be spending $3,000 to $5,000 on what is nothing more than three members of an allied voting bloc trying to publicly embarrass another member of the council simply because they have the votes to do so. Is Laura being accused of a crime? Is she accused of something so shocking to the conscience of San Clemente residents that this waste of money and time, this charade, really must move forward? As far as I can tell, it looks more like the three council members on the attack simply don't like Laura's personality, don't like that she's not a team player in their eyes, and she shares too much information with the public. This is absolutely not worthy of a censure motion. This is ugly politics at its worst. I believe San Clemente residents, whether they are fans of Laura or not, will feel likewise when it is all said and done."
Check in with Joanne.
I don't know why it's doing that. My apologies. He writes, "I continue to be surprised, however, at how Gene James, a man nearly seven feet tall, continues to make himself look so petty and infinitesimally small by aligning with these two disgraced members of the council simply to thwart or attack Laura Ferguson. If I were in the council chamber making these comments, I would ask Gene James the following question. Gene, you were viciously attacked in some of the political flyers that were mailed out to voters. You were attacked on a variety of issues. As a former Army infantryman, one of the issues you were attacked on definitely hit close to home. It was the issue of a military decoration you are alleged to have claimed that you did not actually earn. I have no idea if this is true or not. However, it was taken so seriously by someone out there that a police report was filed on the matter, and that report was sent to the district attorney's office for review, according to the San Clemente Times. Unlike Laura, you were actually accused by someone of committing a crime, the crime of stolen valor. My question is this, Gene. What if after the 2022 election, Laura ends up with two allies and a majority voting bloc on the council? Might she then throw the weight of that voting bloc against you and make a motion to censure you for stolen valor? Three minutes is up." And the next one is from Martina W. "San Clemente has yet again become a subject of watercooler conversation and bemusement after Fencegate and what became the viral story about plowing in the skate park like sands in the bowl. These are the COVID days."
We read that one.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Okay. They were coming in pretty fast there for a while. Okay, the next one is from Anne Marie Hines. "This meeting is a waste of our resources and totally unnecessary. Don't you have anything better to do Thanksgiving week? How about visiting the world's tallest Christmas tree at the outlets? That'll put a smile on your face. Mayor Potem Ferguson has been a friend to the city of San Clemente. Since obtaining office in 2018, she has responded to most, if not all, of my correspondence. This woman cares about the welfare of our town and does not abuse the system. Last December 22, 2019, I asked to meet with her regarding concerns from safe cell sites for San Clemente. I asked for one hour of her time. She freely gave it and more. I have noticed her involvement with our city at all levels of social life. She's doing a great job, and you should leave her alone. Peace and unity to you. Paul and Anne Marie Hines." Gotta put the timer on this one, just a second. Okay. This communication is from Eric Ward. He writes, "City council members, the censure of the Mayor Potem is a waste of the city's time and money. It is unfortunate that some of the council members will probably support this action. One of the council members always votes with Councilmember Ward, and the other council member has an extreme dislike for Mayor Potem Ferguson. This kind of action is an embarrassment to all of San Clemente and shows poor judgment by the council members who voted to proceed with the censure. The only reason to raise the censure at this time is to get the approval from biased council members before the new council members are in place. Other council decisions have been deferred to wait for the new council. Mayor Potem Ferguson was elected on the platform of transparency and wants to keep the residents informed about what is going on in the city. When ex-city manager Maxinoff filed a lawsuit against the city, the Mayor Potem announced the title while other council members tried to shout her down. The title of the lawsuit should have been disclosed on the agenda for the closed session and been in the closed session report and will not affect the outcome of the case. A closed session should not allow a council member to abuse other council members. What do the council members recommend to deal with abused behavior, abusive behavior in a closed session? Informing the public seems appropriate, and people can judge who is the most trustworthy. The Mayor Potem posting public domain messages on her Facebook page is 100% within her free speech rights. Presenting the facts should not be considered shaming. The Mayor Potem is the only council member that promotes fiscal responsibility for the city budget. High legal costs are a significant component of the city budget, and Mayor Potem's suggestion to get competitive quotations have met strong opposition from the other council members who favor BBK. Other council members rarely suggest ways to reduce the costs and vote to approve items that provide little benefit to the city. The city manager is only accountable to the city council. Poor performance by the city manager seems to be accepted by a majority of the council as they do nothing about his actions and poor judgment. Mayor Potem is the only one who calls out these issues, and the censure considers her actions to be harassment. Please do not support this attack on Mayor Potem Ferguson, as she is not the problem with the city council." Next is from Susan Nesbore. "Council, Washington DC swamp politics appears to have reared its ugly head on the decision by Ward, Hamm, and James to try and censor Laura Ferguson. I'm still shaking my head in pure disgust over the outrageous and vindictive behavior that I witnessed at last week's council meeting. To be witness to Kathy Ward's tirade of accusations against Laura Ferguson and calling for Laura to be censured, supported by Gene James and Chris Hamm, who was watching three people held bent on getting Laura Ferguson off city council, and why, in my opinion, they, including Eric's son Scott Smith, lack transparency and actually resent the fact that Laura is all about transparency. Laura ran on it and to work for the betterment of San Clemente and its residents. Promises made, promises kept. I suggest Ward and James start living up to the promises they ran on and stop wasting the taxpayers' money on their personal vendetta against Laura. There are many small businesses in San Clemente that are trying to hang on due to the coronavirus and the restrictions on their businesses that are constantly changing. I'm quite sure they would rather have council put the $5,000 plus towards helping them stay afloat as opposed to this Ward, Hamm, and James circus show of a censure hearing. If Gene and Kathy are unable to check their egos and their hatred towards Laura at the door and get off their self-righteous pedestals, then I suggest they step down immediately. The same goes for Smith and Son, too. Disgusted in San Clemente." Next is from Dawn Urbanek. "This is a time when the California voter is exhausted from COVID-19 election fraud, and this is the priority of the San Clemente City Council? And why would you choose to take such action the meeting before recently elected council members are seated? Unbelievable, extremely disappointing, immature, and a waste of time and money. As long as San Clemente residents are forced to go down this path, I would like to address the issue of BBK. BBK is the law firm that represented the city of Bell, where five Bell City Council members were convicted in a municipal fraud scandal. The five city council members accused the firm, best best at Krieger, and one of its former partners, Edward W. Lee, of failing to exercise proper care and skill when it came to advising them on legal matters. The city of San Clemente is currently fighting the toll road. BBK represents several other cities within the capistrata unified school district boundary, as well as the district itself. All of these entities have different interests in the toll road matter, so it is a conflict for BBK to be representing all of these different parties. I have brought forward extremely well-documented information that the toll road could have been stopped at the Oso Parkway Bridge for many different reasons. One, there are violations of the subdivision map act. The toll road is being built on land sold to CUSD to build a sorrow high school. All of the 401 wastewater discharge flows onto and underneath the school. There are clouds on Title I, all four parcel of CUSD's land. Two, there are no valid NEPA or SEQA permits for the construction of any toll road south of Oso Parkway. Three, there is criminal fraud being committed in order to complete a road that has been denied a wastewater discharge permit five times since 2006 by multiple entities: San Diego Water Board, the California Coastal Commission, and the Secretary of Commerce, stating that, quote, "impacts will be permanent, irreversible, and for the most part, unmitigatable." No other alternative alignment poses the threat of unmitigatable and irrevocable impacts of such magnitude. As a San Clemente resident and taxpayer who has expressed this to BBK for years now, and given all the conflicts of interest which should concern San Clemente residents, I think that firm should have been fired long ago. I stand by Mayor Ferguson." What's that smell? Next is from Debbie Flowers. "The most recent acts by select members of the city council, the city attorney Scott Smith and interim city manager Eric Sun are deplorable. Scott Smith has misguided this council for years. How is he doing his due diligence in allowing the sparse of a hearing to continue? I would like to know the city ordinance that allows for the censuring of a council member." Wait, there isn't one. At the 11/17/2020 city council meeting, the scope of agenda item 9C was to establish the process and grounds for possible censure of council members. Staff's recommendation was, quote, "to provide direction," end quote. What direction was provided? None, because no vote was taken. Instead, Kathy Ward begins citing the grounds of censure for council member Laura Ferguson, and a vote of three to one was taken on that. Illegal, in my opinion, since there is no city ordinance on censure. Therefore, a vote was never taken on item 9C to direct staff, to direct staff. Scott Smith, please do your due diligence and put an end to this mockery of a hearing. Failure to do so is a poor reflection on your ability as an attorney." The next is from, it just says CW. "I respectfully urge you to table this matter and focus on more pressing matters that concern the residents of San Clemente and not your own personal grievances. If any council member ever violated any law at any time, there are appropriate authorities in place to remedy the offense. The FPPC, the district attorney, the state attorney general for the civil courts are the proper entities to address wrongdoing, not a tribunal composed of the same individuals who feel they may have been offended. In addition, average citizens could also wait in, wait, wait in on any inappropriate contact with a council member by way of a special election, a general election, or a recall election. It is ironic to note that a complaint might have also been filed under the San Clemente's Ethics Code, but for the fact that the Ethics Code was rescinded by a formal city council. Several members of that city council are still on the council, both of which are sponsoring and co-sponsoring this censure event. If the city council was truly concerned about the Mayor Potem leadership style or public policy preferences and not just engaging in retribution politics, the current city council simply could have removed her as Mayor Potem at any time during the past eight months. The effort to censure her in the final moments of the final hearing of a departing city council member with whom she has had many policy disagreements gives the impression to many of our residents that this effort is simply political gamesmanship designed to embarrass her and give her a metaphorical public spanking. Have you no shame? Actions like this cause good people to roll their eyes at what has become of our calm and friendly city. Vengeful conduct expressed through last-minute political jabs could be very hurtful. I appreciate that the Mayor Potem appears to be made of stronger stuff. She remains calm and serenely smiles through the withering verbal assaults that have been waged against her, while remaining steadfast and unwavering in assuring government transparency and frugally managing our increasing scarce tax dollars." Next is from Christine Hostetter. "As a citizen of San Clemente, I want to publicly give positive recognition to Pro Tem Laura Ferguson for working for the citizens of San Clemente. I, along with many others, shake our heads at the city-initiated survey of 300 San Clemente citizens at a cost of about $25,000. What is another ill-fated decision by our city manager to become part of a trifecta of bad decisions along with sand in the skate park and Fencegate? Shame on you, Catherine Ward and Christopher Hamm, for your petty ploy to censure Pro Tem Ferguson. Perhaps the censure should be directed at you." The next is from Concerned Citizen. "Since 2016, how much money has the city paid Englander, Nabe, and Allen? It appears payments were made of $102,000 initially, plus $32,500 per month since then. What is the actual total? What is/was EKA being paid to do this whole time? Why were those payments laundered through a law firm, BBK, to avoid public disclosure? Why would the city hide a political survey from the public that was paid for by taxpayer dollars? Do council members and city staff lack complete self-awareness, or do they understand how corrupt they make themselves look by censuring a fellow council member for calling for transparency related to millions of dollars worth of hidden political expenses as the city violated election laws by engaging in political campaigns without proper disclosure?" And the next one is from Sharon Hyder. "Gene, James, Kathy, Ward, and Chris Hamm, what is it that you are hiding? What is it you are trying to suppress Laura Ferguson from telling the public? Attempting to censure her for being transparent with the community, that is her job. What job or whose job are you three doing? This is purely a political stunt. Trying to censure another council member is so inane and desperate. It certainly shines a light on something going on in City Hall. What is it that could make you all so desperate to keep hidden? You three seem to have forgotten why you were elected. It is to do the business of the city for the residents. Your ego and political maneuverings have created such dysfunction that all you seem to be able to do is whine about each other and fight in public. This is juvenile and unprofessional. Your poor conduct is costing the taxpayers money, and worse, allowing your interim city manager and city attorney to continue the gross mismanagement of the city. This waste of taxpayers' money is a perfect example of the petty politicizing instead of good governance. A good city staff team would be bringing the council together and avoiding this waste of public funds. As they should know, you have no right or ability to do this per the city's municipal code. This is clearly a political stunt orchestrated for the last meeting that these three have the ability to demonstrate their petty vindictiveness against Laura Ferguson rather than doing the business of city government. If censuring a council member was even a thing, then Kathy Ward should have been censured for her ethics violation leading to the abolishment of an ethics policy in the city. Chris Hamm for trying to direct staff for his personal preferences or the multiple absences from city council, and basically never showing up to do the job he was elected for. And Gene James for promising to clean up City Hall while campaigning and then reversing his promises and then being complicit with the mismanagement once he got in office. Now we have a new city council being seated. I hope the two of you that are remaining will stop being petty and start acting like professionals, discuss the issues, make your vote, and run the city as it should be run. In the meantime, stop wasting our tax dollars on a special meeting that is pure political stunt for you three. This community is very well-educated and sophisticated, and it is not lost on us how inept your city management is and how petty this council has been. Stop this censure stunt now and waste no more of our money on this and start acting like professionals and conduct the business of the city." Next is from Melissa Phelps. "I recommend this matter to be tabled. If any council member ever violated any law at any time, there are appropriate authorities in place to remedy the offense. The FPPC, the district attorney, the state attorney general for the civil courts are the proper entities to address wrongdoing, not a tribunal composed of the same individuals who feel they may have been offended." I think this one was read before all some.
Hi, Joanne. I'm back. Should I?
Do you want to come here and read? Oh, you're sounding pretty good, though.
Okay. Okay, so this is Sherry Nolan. "It is with great pleasure. I vouch for Laura Ferguson's undeniying service, loyalty, good character, transparency, and commitment to our San Clemente Beach community. Laura has served the public's office well in her years, on the council and for the city. I live in San Clemente at Sea Summit. Because she takes her job seriously, Laura personally came to my house to witness a city violation occurring in my very own backyard. She literally took note and helped me rectify the issue. Not only that, she has worked hard on many concerns of our neighborhood when others neglected to do so. In closing, it is my belief that, as public servants, all city data belongs to the people and therefore cannot be confidential. I have nothing but good things to say about Mayor Potem Laura Ferguson. I feel this is nothing but a few disgruntled board members/council or city managers intent to politically motivate and destroy her." Next one is from Concerned Citizen. "Why is the city spending $3,000 to $5,000 tonight on attorney to criticize meaningful transparency about city expenditures? Why would the city hide a political survey from the public that was paid for by taxpayer dollars? Since 2016, how much money has the city paid Engle, Englelander, no, Nabe, I forgot the name, and Allen? It appears payments were made of $102,000 initially, plus $32,500 per month since then. What is the actual total? Did EKA assist with the most recent confidential poll from Problowski Research that Laura released? What is/was EKA being paid to do this whole time? Why were those payments laundered through a law firm, BBK, to avoid public disclosure? Do council members and city staff lack complete self-awareness, or do they understand how corrupt they make themselves look by censoring a fellow council member for calling..." they make themselves look by censoring a fellow council member for calling for discrepancies related to millions of dollars' worth of hidden political expenses? Has the city violated election laws by engaging in political campaigns without proper disclosure? Next one is from Susan Smith and Ken Orr. Dear Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson and all City of San Clemente Council members, prior to Jean James's election to the council, the city council, under Dan Bain's leadership, voted to illegally erect a homeless camp across from our homes. Eric Sun gave direction to unlawfully install cameras that looked into our backyards and inside neighbors' homes. Laura was the only person who was willing to help us when the homeless camp and cameras were installed. She was the only person who was willing to question the city manager and assistant city manager's unlawful actions of installing the cameras. She was the only person willing to uphold the law and request to have them removed. All other action, active council members at that time supported an illegal-placed homeless camp that cost our city nearly $1 million in 2019 in needless litigation and operating fees. Recently, there were permits wrongfully passed against the city's own land use plan. Thankfully, every council member was willing to listen to our appeal, but it was not without the cover-up of all of the wrongdoings. Instead of it, instead, it was presented as though the city personnel, development management team, and planning commission involved were thorough and accurate. All of us at the, at a familiar, that are familiar with the situation, know the comments were untruthful. While we do not agree with all of Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson's actions, there have been many actions on behalf of all of the council members, assistant city manager, per city council, city personnel, planning commission, development management team, and others that have made decisions on behalf of our city that was put, that has put our city in the unfortunate position of litigation on multiple occasions. No one appears to have ever been held accountable for their actions in this city. Why not, why now? Why single out Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson? It is wrongful for the city council to be taking actions against one single person while letting other potential liabilities continue unabated. Please vote no to the censure of Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. Thank you. Susan Smith and Ken Orr. Next one is Laura Johnson. Why hasn't the city manager been censored for dumping sand into our skate park? Why hasn't the city manager been fired for costing the city more than one-half of a million dollars in harassment lawsuits? With many more on the way. Why hasn't the whole city council been censored for closing our ocean? Only kooks close the ocean, and you are all a bunch of kooks. This show, this show tonight is a joke.
Okay, the next one is from Janine Heft. Good evening. I have had the pleasure to serve with Laura Ferguson on other governmental bodies, and I have always been impressed by her professionalism, knowledge of the issues, and dedication to public service. Just like any public official elected to office, Laura Ferguson knows her purpose is to serve her constituents and ensure that all government transactions are transparent and readily available to the public, and I believe she has done so in an exemplary way. Censor should never be used as a way of settling what seems to be a political dispute about whether taxpayer money ought to be spent on a political survey. A motion to censure a fellow council member should be used only in extreme circumstances, when actual wrongdoing can be proven by a thorough examination of the evidence. No such examination occurred, and instead, it was hastily placed on the agenda before the new council is seated, therefore depriving them of the right to carefully examine these claims, as well as depriving Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson from having enough time to prepare her rebuttal. I am sure that everyone would agree that there is no urgency to hear this matter that would justify taking such an extreme action right now, so I would kindly suggest that the fairest way to handle this would be to table this matter so that the new council has adequate time to review it and make a fair and informed decision. Thank you. Next is from Tony Rubellino. At the end of the agenda item to discuss the censure procedure at last week's city council meeting, viewers may have missed Councilwoman Ward smirk as the item wrapped up. The last time I saw her make that facial expression was when myself and others were being ejected from council chambers, only to have to take an oath by law enforcement to quote "abide by the rules of city council" end quote, in order to re-enter, but I digress. Councilwoman Ward certainly gave a laundry list of complaints about Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson at the last meeting, but his Councilwoman Ward had enough time to reflect on her own misgivings. Let's review. To begin, she was outed as the source for a leak of insider information to the OC Weekly in a hit piece article on Dan Bain and Jim Beaver. When the budding journalist realized his error in not doing his due diligence, he offered a retraction and the story was scrubbed. I wonder if Councilwoman Ward is concerned that she may have negatively impacted his future in journalism. Also, Councilwoman Ward wrote an email to the John and Ken Show producer stating that our Orange County Sheriff's Department had quote "wist out" end quote on enforcing our local ordinances in relation to the homeless issues in San Clemente. She committed to do a live interview on the air, but I suspect someone advised her otherwise because she backed out of that deal before it ever came to fruition. Does anyone recall a public apology to our Orange County Sheriff's Department chief and others? I don't. Councilwoman Ward also filed a police report against me stating she felt a physical reaction when I spoke at city council meetings. I suspect this was a political hit job, just as we're seeing today in this special city council meeting, in order to silence opposition. While the police report never went anywhere as the DA quickly dismissed it, how much time and resources were spent on this bogus report? It's time for the city council to put the election madness behind us and move forward. Everyone should vote no to a censure of Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson and work towards transitioning the new city council for the best outcomes for all of San Clemente residents. Next is from Karen Prescott Leffler. Spoon feeding bits and pieces of raw meat to the public out of closed session is hardly transparency. Laura, you have decided for all of us what should be leaked, how often, and what venue. Maybe a social media thread here or there, a leak to a supporter, let the telephone gossip game begin. This trickle-down transparency is called manipulation, and your narrative is one of propaganda, considering we are only privy to the parts you leak. Why not release all, Laura? Give the public 100% of closed session. Allow the public to truly make up their mind without you crafting the fake news. Apparently, you do value closed session when it suits you. Your outright manipulation is causing us to take our eyes off the ball. You throw out a tidbit while you vote to defend our fight against the toll road. Your quote, "We are in the clear, we won the battle." You are the only council member that declared victory over the toll road. You proudly showcase your leaks while over here, you cozy up to out-of-town homeless advocates. You want us little people to think that only you hold the keys to knowledge with the scraps you toss us. What we know for certain is that you lack ethics with a capital E, and the goal of you and your squad is to disrupt our local city government. Once closed session is compromised, you now become Empress Pro Tem. Instead of a badge, you wear the crown, and your squad, Brad and Beaver, will hold your Okay, the next one is anonymous. I support the censuring of Laura Ferguson to protect our city of San Clemente from further unprofessional conduct that undermines the governance of our city. Mayor Pro Tem Laura Ferguson has repeatedly failed in her duty to follow and uphold the laws of the state of California, the Constitution, and the rules, regulations, and the policies of the city of San Clemente. Laura Ferguson has failed to demonstrate the highest level of professionalism and respect while in the course and scope of her office. This is evidenced by Mayor Pro Tem Laura Ferguson posting emails from her constituents on her social media page for the sole purpose of retaliation. Consequently, these constituents would receive scorn from her supporters. Ms. Ferguson supports the belittling and bullying that occurs on her social media page, as if it is modern-day Hillary. It is not appropriate for a public official to support hateful and venomous comments that attack her constituents, who merely reached out to her as a local government official for help, critique, or questioning her regarding city matters and questions regarding her conduct. According to the First Amendment, people have the right to petition government for redress of grievances without fear of punishment or reprisals. Not only is this a First Amendment violation, it is a complete break of public trust. People will have to think twice in emailing her, because those emails will be posted on her official social media page. This is a clear attempt to suppress freedom of speech by Ms. Ferguson. Additionally, for the last, for the past two years, Laura Ferguson has posted emails on her social media page from the former city manager, the interim city manager, and the assistant city manager, for the sole purpose of retaliation as well, by having her supporters attack and demean city employees. Mrs. Ferguson has created a hostile and toxic work environment, which has caused embarrassment to current and former city employees. This has jeopardized the city's position with pending claims and litigation, as well as risks and liability of unfair labor practices. Ms. Ferguson also posted an email on her social media page where she was requesting the disclosure of private information from a union that endorsed a San Clemente candidate. Ms. Ferguson's request for private information caused a distinct chilling effect on the union's members. It was quite intimidating to those members. It also sent out a message that she was above the law. After listening to city council meetings for months, there have been many public comments submitted by the public that corroborate the divisiveness by Laura Ferguson. Please watch the city council meeting on March 17th at the timeframe of two, two hours and 27 minutes, where she discloses closed session information and active litigation. She refuses to follow point of order and rubber's rules of order. Please also watch May 5th city council meeting after the public comments for the election of the mayor, which supports her divisive style of leadership, and this was the sentiment of 14 San Clemente residents. Please pass this resolution for censuring Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson for unacceptable conduct. Laura, can you read for a little bit?
Uh, yes, I can. Um, just want to make sure. Uh, we're on Kathy Owens, correct?
Correct, uh-huh.
Okay. So this is from Kathy Owens. To be, it is about time that the city council censures Laura Ferguson. Her actions for revealing closed session materials involving lawsuits has been despicable. Isn't that in itself a Brown Act violation? Her aggressive actions against our other council members and city staff have been not in keeping with good taste and protocol. I am urging the city council to censure her and take away the title of Mayor Pro Tem. Next one is from Diane Doherdy. I support the censure of Mayor Pro Tem Laura Ferguson. Her consistent belittling of staff and fellow council members on her social media and during council meetings are not acts of transparency, but rather personal vendettas from her time as an employee with the city. This type of behavior has gone on for months and has no place in our city. After attending and watching city council meetings for the past eight-plus years, I can emphatically state that I have never witnessed such a passive-aggressive member of our council, of our city council. While I realize that council members will have different political views and agendas, it seems like those that may have campaigned against each other and were aligned, aligned differently have come together to make the best decisions for the city of San Clemente. Unfortunately, Laura Ferguson is not one of those members. Next one is from Matthew Flowers. Let me get this straight. The purpose of this hearing is to discuss the unacceptable conduct of Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson? What a joke. She is the only transparent and ethical person, or ethical council member on this county, city council. Let's point out the conduct of the following individuals, and you can decide whose conduct is unacceptable. We first have Jean James, who lied about being a lesion of merit recipient while backing up his truck and smoking out homeless people in their tents at the North Beach parking lot. We have Kathy Ward, who led a smear campaign against former Mayor, Mayor Dan Bain when he was running for election, saying that he was in the pocket of the TCA. Chris Hamm was missed almost half of the council meetings in the last eight years, and doesn't have the decency to turn on his video while participating in the Zoom council meetings. He even shows his lack of respect for Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson by publicly disrespecting her, not only in open session, but also in closed session council meetings. Eric Sun, as interim city manager, is not even able to provide council with all of the supporting data so that they can make informed decisions. He resists the respect, requests of Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson for information to where she has to do her own public records request. Finally, we have the city county, city attorney, Scott Smith, who lets this all play out. A city attorney, he should impartial and direct counsel. He has obviously picked a side, and it's not the side of transparency.
Okay, the next communication is also anonymous. Please pass this resolution for the censuring of Mayor Pro Tem Laura Ferguson for unacceptable conduct. Laura Ferguson, as a member of the DAAS, does not promote teamwork, but rather tears down fellow council members and city management. She has publicly criticized other council members or publicly demeaned members of our city's management team on her social media pages. We have all seen this horrible public display to embarrass and humiliate them. San Clemente residents should not be led by this divisive style of leadership. Laura Ferguson lacks the ability to work well with others and always expresses her grievances as a disgruntled former employee. She consistently supports bullying on her social media page, and this should stop immediately. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson intimidates people from emailing her by posting those emails on her social media page. This is retaliatory and is unconstitutional. For someone who says that she's a proponent of civil rights, she sure has violated the First Amendment rights of her constituents. Please pass this resolution to censure Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. Thank you very much. Uh, the next you find 25-year resident of San Clemente. As a resident of San Clemente, I support the vote to censure Councilwoman Ferguson. After almost two years of watching and reading Ms. Ferguson's actions attacking current employees and vendors on her Facebook page and from the DAAS, violating confidentiality of closed session items, harvesting lawsuits from former employees, it is time for the rest of the council to distance themselves from her actions. If Ms. Ferguson can't see how her personal crusade against the city is negatively affecting the rest of the community, maybe others who want to bring more lawsuits against the city will know she doesn't speak for the rest of the city council. How much have her actions already cost us? Maybe Ms. Ferguson can set aside her personal animosity and learn to work with the other members of the council for the good of San Clemente. Next communication is from Deek Van Nort. I agree with this action, even though I think it is unfortunate and regrettable. While I think Ms. Ferguson believes she is doing what is best for the city, she was elected as a one-member of the city council. She was not elected to act as an individual, which is what she is doing now. Simply citing transparency as a justification of her actions does not mean she is right. The city is supposed to be run by five people that represent the city as a whole. The city council members do not get to pursue their own beliefs when the rest of the council votes them down. Instead of wearing the censure's badge of honor and suing the city, I hope Ms. Ferguson will focus- will focus her fantastic energy on what the council determines is best for the city. She is an individual, does not get to decide what is best for the city. We're nearing the end, Laurie, so if you could just double check all the email sources and make sure we haven't missed anyone, we appreciate it. The, the next communication is from Ryan Alexander Flowers. Why is Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson trying to be censured? This hearing is inappropriate and infringing on her First Amendment right of free speech. Laura Ferguson has been a leader and continues to do the work of the people who elected her with class. She does not stoop down to the level of those who want to tear her down, but willingly continues to press on for the good of the city and its residents. She ran as a reformer and she, with all of her years working for the city of San Clemente, knows better than anyone else what changes need to be made. This is why we are here today, because she is the only one who asks questions. The abuse truly needs to stop. Laura has stood up time and time again to see that that, see that it does. Many laws and procedures have been broken to bring this special meeting forward. It would probably be in the best interest of this council, city attorney, and interim city to not continue. Next is from Jennifer Sterling, to whom it may concern. Laura is an asset to the city of San Clemente. Transparency is essential during this time. Every tax dollar spent should be public. Every action will be looked at with a microscope, but you have to hide. Laura is an ethical citizen and I admire her for exposing any corruption or any time you are not being fiscally responsible with our tax dollars. Thank you. And I think another one just came in on my email. Let me get that. Okay.
Do one more as well.
Yes, okay. This email is from Audrey McIntosh and she writes, hello. Um, the city council needs to bring back the code of ethics policy to avoid this embarrassing circus tonight. I believe Kathy would have led the charge to eliminate the code of ethics policy several years ago. Most cities have one. In fact, Lake Forest has an excellent one that our city can use as a reference. And go ahead and read yours, Laurie. I'm just gonna go through more emails and see if there's any others.
Okay. So this one's from James Monroe. Please don't not refer to me as Laura. I have a title and it's Mayor Pro Tem and I should be addressed as such. Laura needs to get over herself. Notice how she had a temper tantrum at the beginning of the meeting when her perceived power of being able to run the meeting was taken away. Also, it's very evident that Laura is for Silver Living Homes, VRBOs, and the Toll Road, and that's why she has released information publicly that could promi- um, compromise any sort of litigation with those parties, and that's why she needs to go. A censure is simply not enough and she needs to be removed from office. Thank you. And that's it.
That's all the public comments?
Please record public comments.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Pardon?
Do you want to support the motion of public comment?
I wish we did this now.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Aye.
There you are. Okay. Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Vote is great.
Aye.
Okay, that carries 4-0.
Okay. City attorney?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, there are kind of two things that I'd recommend you do uh, between now and, and the end of this meeting. Uh, well, three, you need to keep in mind that you have a meeting curfew at 11:00 that you need to vote to extend, so let's not forget to do that. Um, because I think this is going to take at least that long. Uh, secondly, as I said earlier, I wanted to go through, um, some of my thoughts and some of the concerns raised by council from Mayor Pro Tem about, uh, proposed, uh, elements of the resolution and proposed findings of facts. I consciously avoided assisting in the preparation of these exhibits or, or this resolution. So I've taken the time, as you've been talking and as we've been hearing these comments, to make it most of the way through and be able to give you, um, if council desires, some of my, um, suggestions about what you might consider and what you might exclude or, or discuss further. Um, at that point or before that point, uh, council should deliberate about, uh, what its, what its desires are with regard to this initiative. And then, um, if you take any action on a resolution, um, that needs to be, I, I suggest, written from top to bottom and circulated for, the, posted for the public to see and circulated to all participants in this, in this meeting. Um, so, uh, Councilmember James, I, I, it's up to you and your colleagues. Um, I, I think with 15 minutes, I could finish my walkthrough, what's been presented, or if you would like to talk about that first and then...
So let's, let's, let's go through your walkthrough and after your walkthrough, we'll take a motion on extending beyond, um, 11:00 PM.
Okay. You'd like to, could you reconvene at 10:50, then I'm certain I'll be finished.
Okay, so, uh, you are asking to go out and write it and asking us to pause?
I, you could use that as a discussion piece or you could give me direction before that point.
Oh, I, I, I missed that. So what you're looking, you're, you're asking us basically to recess at this point?
I'm preparing an annotated version of the, uh, draft resolution that has my comments in it, and I think I'll need about 20 more minutes on that. I'm, I'm to H.
Okay, so it's, it's...
Well, to, uh, uh, Ms. Ferguson's, uh...
It's 10:30, so it's 10:30. So in theory, we would have recess until 10:50. Um, we would have to come back at 10:50 and extend ourselves beyond 11 o'clock. And then you could, you can make your presentation.
I think that would work.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, please.
Uh, Councilmember James, thank you. Um, city attorney, this is council deliberations. You're, you know, for council, not for you, not for the city attorney. All due respect, it's council deliberations.
Yeah.
So it's time council deliberates and, and you had indicated you didn't have anything to do with preparing this resolution, right?
Or it's considered. I'd like to give you my advice on what parts of it might be, uh, unacceptable or, or questionable constitutionality.
I would like advice of the city attorney. I'll make that motion if we need to do that so that Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson can vote no.
I'll second that.
Uh, how do you know? I mean, that's fine, but I'm just pointing out that council deliberations have to happen. They can ask questions, but you had indicated you're removed from this resolution.
Okay, so you...
That's fine. I'm fine. I'm letting go.
So I appreciate that. Scott, can't we, uh, take a motion now? Make a motion to continue past 11 o'clock?
Do I?
No. We, we can.
Hmm, yeah, you can do that anytime, right?
I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, continue past 11 o'clock.
Second?
I'll second.
So motion by, motion by Councilmember Ward, second by Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. Uh, city clerk, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
That carries 4-0. And...
Well, if I... When you reconvene, that the, the meeting be formatted so that just you and, and city staff, uh, are, are, uh, are participants in the meeting, then it will be, it will be clear that it's, it's your meeting at that point.
Okay, thank you. I agree. So, so we just kind of clear our screens and go away for a while, right? And come back?
We'll have to make a, we'll, we'll need a motion at a second.
Okay, so I, I move that we adjourn until, uh, 10:55.
Okay, can I have a second?
I believe the motion would be to recess. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I, I move that we recess until 10:55 PM.
I'll second that.
Excellent.
Okay.
City clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. We're on recess.
I have a 20-minute break they're taking.
Yeah, I heard you.
There, I can't. Scott, the floor is yours.
All right, um, I just transmitted to council and to-
Excuse me, um, I'm sorry, um, may I, I wanted to say something because I, I heard, um, Councilmember James, may I please? I heard that you were talking about a comment that wasn't received, um, by Mr. Janus, and I heard, and my son texted me, he surprised me with a comment tonight, and it wasn't read either. I let Joanne know, but I guess he didn't know, he had to put in there specifically, "read at the meeting," so I wanted to make a motion to see if we can reopen the public hearing for, um, you know, for his comment to be read, and Mr. Janus, and I heard from Ms. Toni O too, and I let Joanne know, her comment, um, she didn't specify, "please read at the meeting," so do I have a second to read the comments? I know my son spent some time on this and surprised me, so I really would love him to be able to have his comment read, if possible, and the others, of course.
I'll support, I'll support that.
Thank you, Councilmember James.
So we have a, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, has a motion to have the remaining comments read, uh, I second it, uh, Madam Clerk, can you take the vote?
Yes, you're talking about reading those three correctly.
Those th- those three, Joe Janus-
Many, Janus and-
Young Ferguson and Toni O.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Councilmember, um, James?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Aye.
Okay, and Lori is, oh, here she comes now. Okay. Okay, first one is from Eric Ferguson, and he writes, "Hi, this is Eric Ferguson. I'm writing to talk about my mom's First Amendment right to have freedom of speech. The other members of the city council should not be able to take away her First Amendment right. I'm hearing about another council member, Chris Hamm, trying to show that he is the better person by kicking and saying rude comments to the council member. Even though it may sound like I'm trying to defend my mom, it's also about rights that was formed under one people, the United States of America, where all the people came together to form one nation and union to give us the right to do and say what we want to. Also, the laws and orders of this country, and what is he doing surfing during pandemic when the beaches closed? What a disrespect to our city. She was elected to serve our city and try to lead us into a better way so our city can be great, but by trying to silence the one person trying to change our city for it better, what is going to happen? Nothing. This email is showing the people how we need to protect city councilwoman Laura Ferguson's right. We all have the right to speak, and why shouldn't she? Thank you, Eric Ferguson." And the next one is from Joe Janus. And he writes, "Councilmember Ferguson has used the terms transparency, freedom, and liberty to justify her actions since she became a member of council. We all remember her rants and raves about freedom and liberty as she publicly attacked Mayor Steve Swartz up until the day he passed. In the spirit of transparency, at the December 3, 2019 council meeting, Councilmember Ferguson falsely accused our ex-city ma- manager, James Maxinoff, of attending an unpermitted event and publicly acclaimed, 'you are not above the law.' I hope you recall her negative public statements about him up until and even after he resigned. All very damaging to him and his family. The current litigation the city faces from Maxinoff is directly related to her false allegations and her hostile treatment of him. At the July 7, 2020 meeting, in the spirit of transparency, she decided to inform the public of this litigation, which was a closed session topic. In doing so, she only strengthened the plaintiff's case. In the spirit of transparency, at the same council meeting, Councilmember Ferguson accused Eric's son of creating hostile work environment and claimed there was bad blood between them. She recently posted an article on her Facebook page about city council members protecting bad employees, and once again accused son of creating a hostile work environment. A council member's Facebook page and council meetings are not platforms to discuss employer-employee relations. If she continues to do real negative work, ends the lawsuits." Councilmember Ferguson, can you put your, go on mute, we're getting a lot of feedback. Thank you. "Councilmember Ferguson has had problems with all three of our city managers, James Maxinoff, Bob Dunneck, and Eric's son. Due to her refusal to respect the provisions of the Brown Act, she has not been able to work with any council member, not Steve Swartz, Chris Hamm, Jean James, Kathy Ward, nor Dan Bane. The fact is, she hasn't been able to work with any city manager or council member since she has been on council, not one. We are all advocates of transparency, freedom, and liberty. But Councilmember Ferguson has taken these principles way beyond their meaning and intent. It appears she doesn't understand why cities conduct closed session meetings or the need of confidentiality. Councilmember Ferguson's insistence on violating the provisions of the Brown Act has turned our council meetings into circus shows. Her claims of transparency, freedom, and liberty have become trite. Make no mistake, the vast majority of St. Mary residents do not approve of Ferguson's unethical management style and believe the censure is long overdue." And the next one is from Toni Akapinti. "Good evening, council. I'm outraged after watching last Tuesday's council meeting when Kathy Ward read her ridiculous letter attacking our mayor, our pro tem mayor, Laura Ferguson. To be specific, Kathy's letter claimed Ms. Ferguson should not be allowed to speak her mind on city issues, and tried to portray her as being irresponsible for disclosing public information to the public. Obviously, Ms. Ferguson has her-" Obviously, Ms. Ferguson has her right to free speech and the expression of her professional objectifications, especially when it comes to sharing open city matters with its citizens. Further, it's our council's duty as a public leader to share concerns over potential issues in or actions of our city, its representatives, and public servants. Few items in the city should be shrouded from the citizens over which it governs. We elect you, and you serve us. You are held accountable to our scrutiny and the actions you take while representing our city is our right to know. For example, tonight's special meeting is costing us an estimated $5,000. I ask you, if this was your personal money being used, would you be so quick and wasteful in its being spent? Kathy called this meeting with support from Jean James and Chris Hamm. I question if the meeting would have been called or supported if the three of you were personally responsible for its expense. I expect not. I would also like to bring to light and question the attorney of choice for whom we are being billed for tonight's session. Christina Tally, the attorney taking $5,000 for a couple hours' work this evening, was a former employee of BBK, Bestest and Krieger Attorneys. This seems to be a conflict of interest, especially if our city attorney, Scott Smith, is also in support of suppressing our city leader's speech while he himself is currently employed with the same firm, BBK. Are we really going to get unbiased and fair assessment from Ms. Tally? Was the opportunity for this session to put for any other capable attorney to pursue? And why do we continue to ally our city with a single attorney firm? Perhaps something we may consider with seriousness past posts session. Many citizens of San Clemente would like to thank Laura for being the one to stand up, be vocal on what's happening in our city, and share the actions of our council so we may assess them, their actions, and results. It's not easy to be the lone leader. We thank you, Ms. Ferguson, for your transparency and the time and effort you put into your posts. I know you love the city as much as we do. I stand with Laura, a solemn aye. That's signed, Toni O." That concludes the comments.
Motion to close public comments? Second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hamm.
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Ferguson.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, Scott, you're on.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. As I said earlier, it was important to me and to your city manager and city clerk that you have these deliberations openly. And what that means is, there hasn't been an opportunity for me to advise you on the content of the draft resolution or the exhibits to support it. And so I'd like to take this opportunity to take that draft and give you my input on it with some revisions and some questions that I've highlighted in the document that I transmitted a few minutes ago. And I'll read the relevant passages with your indulgence so everybody knows exactly what's at issue here and what I'm recommending. I do want to give this disclaimer. Contrary to assertions made earlier, I have no dog in this fight. I have no opinion whatsoever on this resolution of these allegations. And by the same token, by offering constraints or criticisms or proposed deletions of the draft resolution, I have, there's no judgment in there against its author or against the original notices moved by this council. So thanks for letting me explain that caveat, then dive in. I think the recitals of the resolution have come from the council.
That's why they have to get posted, because it's getting changed. So yeah, put that on.
Oh, sorry, Joanne, we can hear you. I think the recitals don't raise any concern. To me, that brings us to Section A. Sorry, if you, I'll walk you through the actual text with revisions that I proposed, and then we'll talk about which exhibits might support them as findings of fact and which I'd prefer you exclude based on some of the deliberations you've had earlier. The first, I would suggest that if you include Provision Number A1, it would be suggesting to the manager, not attempting to influence, that the public contract with Rod's Tree Service for tree trimming continue in effect after the city council decided not to renew or extend it. The deliberations in this email took place after the council considered a motion to extend Rod's Tree Service. And I think that the gist of the correspondence, as I understand it, was that the acting city manager didn't want to inadvertently extend that service. The heading, as was indicated early, is from somebody else. The subject was generated by a third party. I think you should not include the subject as a finding of fact. And the remainder of the correspondence includes attachments, which are correspondence to or from constituents, which I would suggest you do not consider due to the protections we talked about earlier. Counsel can deliberate about Number Two. But in listening to some of the input about Issue Number Two, this one is ordering the city manager to remove a fence to address the COVID crisis. As was suggested earlier and by members of this council, I think that there was, just personally in looking at that, quite a bit of confusion arising from the forecount membership of the city council and what directives had been given, what had been rescinded, what stood, what needed to change, what was mandated by the state or the county health departments. And I just remember there being quite a bit of confusion in those days, the early days of the pandemic, and confusion on the part of the council. Again, that was testified to this evening earlier. And my recommendation to you would be, because that was so unclear based on circumstances that had to do with the even number of the council members, and you're deadlocking on that, that you perhaps not consider Number Two. If you want to do that, I could suggest about how to substantiate it. But I've highlighted it because I think that you might find that clarity of testimony and of that situation are a little bit lacking here. Then we go to B. I would suggest that B1 be deleted from your consideration. There are a couple of readings of this. One is that the candidates who were available to the council that time, Mr. Dunick in a continuing interim service, contract service, or Assistant City Manager Sond, who might be logically found to ascend as a candidate to the first chair. If you were worried about privacy considerations relating to that deliberation, then whether or not to hire a recruiter spoke to that privacy consideration. But I think tonight it's impossible to do that without violating those individuals' privacy. And my suggestion to you would be that you set B1 aside because it related to a situation, potential privacy considerations, but we just can't talk about them in a public setting like this. So I would suggest that because B1 is protected and the circumstances surrounding that recruitment can't be discussed, that you not consider that. B2, publicly criticizing the Assistant City Manager, as I indicated earlier, I think is problematic because he's not a direct report to the city council. There was an accusation involved here. It's found in Exhibit B2, May 28, 2019, which is a publication of a criticism and accusation of the ACM, which didn't give him a chance to respond to that and to declare his name publicly.
Scott, can I just ask a question? On that, what about, you know, criticizing the Assistant City Manager when he reports to the city manager? Is that not a violation of procedures of how a council member should question the actions of the Assistant City Manager? It goes against procedures. So wouldn't it be, on those grounds, still valid?
That procedure that you're alluding to would be what's mandated in the City Municipal Code that talks about the council's ability to provide direction to the city manager, including evaluations of the city manager, but not to subordinates of the manager. And so, Councilmember Ward, that annotation that I added outside the chain of command was meant to speak to that parameter that you mentioned. There's criticism of the city manager in Exhibit B2. I suggest you not consider that as a basis for what I've given you in a revision here, which relates only to the Assistant City Manager.
Is that B3 you were talking about?
That was B2.
Okay.
B3, I think, is a legitimate, well, a legitimate input from a council member to the city manager about budget priorities and budget timing. I think in a world where there wasn't time on the manager's plate to give attention to these alternative, these budget alternatives, and where a council member is demanding exclusive attention to his or her budget priorities, this could be a problem. In other words, if one of you goes in and pulls the manager off of what he or she has to do to bring the budget forward, that would be a problem. But there's not sufficient evidence that that was going on in this. And I would suggest that you not consider finding B3. C also relates to that recruitment. I think council would need to receive more testimony about whether those deliberations were held in private and whether the straw poll in question was part of those deliberations and linked to the qualifications of some candidate, including the Assistant City Manager. But that's not in the record before you. And so unless you want to reopen and discuss that some more, I'd suggest that you not advance finding Number C. D is the issue about cooperating in the defense as required under the city's memorandum of coverage with its joint insurance pool, the CJPIA. You had some conversation earlier about records, whether records must be released upon request, and the difference between that and publishing records unilaterally to the world. I think that you could reasonably look at your memorandum of coverage as a council and decide whether that duty of cooperation that you've alluded to earlier includes providing documents upon request and/or publishing them to the world and the complications that might arise from that in terms of managing and settling a lawsuit. I think you can do that based on a reading of your CJPIA memorandum of coverage, which you've cited earlier in the meeting, and your reasonable understanding of what that cooperation dictates. The very same thing, oh, I'm sorry. On D1, I wanted to suggest that it's not clear whether the letter to the editor from Mr. Malamud was accomplished on his own or as an agent of Mayor Protem Ferguson. And since we know that, I would suggest that you exclude that letter to the editor from consideration. As I've noted there. I'm sorry, we were on...
You know what, Scott, I don't see the deletion of that letter.
I have, under finding of fact, it would be the one, the second bullet. That letter to the editor is part of Exhibit D1.
Thank you.
That's why I exclude it. And there I have, you're reading and understanding the CJPIA. Making direct contact with the opposing council, that contact is mentioned in the letter that's Exhibit D2. And I think you can reasonably read your duty to cooperate as having bearing on that finding, if you choose to do that. E, this was mentioned by Ms. Tally and by Mike and Brad. Giving a public opinion about the manager's performance and certainly giving the manager your opinion of his or her performance is a protected activity. But in doing that outside the city council evaluation process with the involvement of the Human Resources Manager is problematic. The finding of fact for that would be Exhibit C. I wouldn't want you to include in that finding any effort to give input to the city manager, but it would be cross-pollinating that with an HR process outside the annual evaluation that you would consider a behavior that's contrary to council policy and your municipal code. F, I alluded to at the beginning here. Being critical of a manager in a public hearing, I think is protected activity. But there's an issue where a council member, on the one hand, asks someone to do something illegal, or on the other hand, disciplines that person for doing something that their job requires. The latter, well, either scenario could constitute a hostile workplace. And so the issue here was a public allegation that city manager's Maxchinoff and a recreational activity was illegal. I think what I have done here is suggested that, what you suggested, that seeking an opinion about that as to the propriety and taking that up individually in an evaluation process would be the issue there. Correspondence dated, I'm sorry, noted F5, November 11, 2019, could substantiate that finding if council so desired. That brings us to G. This is the one about serial meetings, and I think it's a little bit complicated for some of the reasons touched on by Mr. Winston. As occurred with the notice of this special meeting, the suggestion by three members of the city council that a meeting occur and that's something beyond the agenda is not a Brown Act violation or a serial meeting, per se. However, an offline deliberation among council members about whether that item is a good idea or a bad idea is a serial meeting and a Brown Act violation. There's an Exhibit G attached to this. I looked at Exhibit G while you were deliberating, and again, during that break. And Exhibit G, as was pointed out earlier, suggests that it's a good idea to talk about something, but doesn't suggest that the idea proposed for the agenda is good or bad. Ideally, you wouldn't CC each other. When you do that, so that a reply to all would be maybe misinterpreted as support or opposition to that agenda idea. But I didn't find anything in this except the CC. And when you read that exhibit several times, it doesn't support or oppose, at least as it stands by itself, the initiative that's proposed. So I would suggest that unless you have an alternative finding of fact for G, that you consider not advancing that. H is pretty simple, we're almost done. I think that stands by itself. I didn't see any expressive activity in there. There's, you're not allowed, as members of the governing body of the city, to communicate directly with members of your employees' association. You must do that through their representatives. And if you want to give direction to them, you have to do that in a meet-and-confer process. There's nothing wrong with your publicly communicating your position on negotiations or where you think things ought to go with the city in terms of staffing and labor relations. But the city's not allowed to give directives to members of the association without, outside that official conduit. that official conduit or a meet-and-confer process. Exhibit H, I think, could stand on its own as evidence of concern in that realm. We talked about I earlier. There are, the law regarding deliberative process privilege is evolving. The justification for the deliberative process is that as council ideas and management ideas gestate, they ought to be able to do so with some element of privacy so that you as council members and policymakers are not discouraged from laying in, checking in with your management and helping with your input on city initiatives. If all of that is discoverable as policy moves forward in the gestational period, then it creates a disincentive for you to participate and for you to represent your constituents at City Hall. However, the deliberative process privilege takes, it anticipates that the thought process, including a poll that management might do, is going to come to fruition before you in some kind of decision-making policy. I know that some of the frustration expressed in this regard was that this was kind of taking long, at least in Mayor Protem's eyes, and that it needed to come to fruition or else die, at which point the gestational information, let's call it, would be released to the public. So because there's kind of two schools of thought about the deliberative process privilege, especially with regard to agenda items and decisions that have not come to fruition, I'd suggest that you not make that part of your consideration under I if you are to pursue that. I think that you've got, you made a pretty clear record that at the time that information from the public regarding alternatives to homelessness was distributed and collected by the city, that was done in the context of some pretty serious litigation, several lawsuits costing hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend from several sources, and let's see, I'm sorry, settlement possibilities with the plaintiffs in those cases that may involve things that were the substance of that poll. That poll would not be confidential forever, and I don't think the remainder of it is. But I think from my understanding of it, the council could reasonably conclude that that information was gathered as information that would guide you and would guide us and your manager in considering and formulating settlement proposals to get out of that lawsuit. J, I think, is, sorry, I got to get to that one. J relates to directives that items be added to the city council agenda. As was indicated earlier, the council's policy requires that there be concurrence in, the literal words are that the manager and the mayor decide what will be on the agenda in conference. I think the plain language of that, and I've suggested this publicly, and it was suggested when you deliberated the policy, that the intent of that was to require that the manager agree with the Mayor Protem's or the mayor's suggestions for the agenda, or that the mayor or Mayor Protem would need to come back to a council meeting, pick up a second to that initiative, and then bring it forward. That was pretty clear from the deliberations that occurred when you adopted that policy, I think, if that is, and if we have a clear understanding of that. Threatening discipline or some other consequence with an ultimatum, that items that the manager doesn't care to advance right now be advanced could be grounds to look at that. Again, you have to find that that's true, and there's an exhibit that speaks to that in council policy, I'm sorry, in Exhibit J, October 6, 2020 correspondence, that is in that exhibit. Sorry for that long walk, but I do appreciate the thought you've given and that the legal team and Ms. Tally have given to taking a rough draft and doing our best to have you conform it to constitutional principles. Once you deliberate, if it looks like you're going forward on this, then we can go through those, especially those deletions, and make sure that they're documented for the public and for the city clerk.
Okay, so what, we're in deliberations at this time, correct, Scott?
I think that's right, yes.
Okay. So...
Scott, I have one logistical question to ask you before we proceed. So, we're going to deliberate on what you just presented, and we're going to take out or whatever, take out or keep whatever we're going to do. Are you going to produce another one of these tonight?
Yeah, we'll do that, but we'll walk through it. We'll go through the documents that's before you paragraph by paragraph to confirm that if council wants to adopt that provision, you know exactly what you're doing.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, Councilmember Ward, thank you.
Thank you. So Scott, when you say we're going to go through the documents, are you talking about the supporting documents?
No, I would suggest that if you're adopting these findings, you base them on the more specific parameters that I've suggested. So it would be good for you to decide how much of this you want to advance, if any, and then we can talk about what we don't need to. We'll just confirm which portions of the exhibits you're using as findings of facts to substantiate that.
Okay. So first, we have to decide whether we're even advancing, is that correct?
I think that would be really helpful.
Okay. So I would submit to the council that there's a reason why we're doing this. It's not political, it's not to go after Mayor Protem Ferguson because we don't like her, that's not the issue. We're doing it because there's been clear instances that we all are aware of that have happened, that have really hindered the work of the city council and potentially caused a hostile work environment that, you know, we have a duty to stop. So I think that we should go forward. I do agree on the grounds, some of the grounds that Mr. Smith has said, you know, that we should consider. So, you know, I move that we do go forward, but we do go through this and consider what we are advancing. I think it's very telling, this is the last thing I'll say, it's very telling that Mayor Protem Ferguson did not address us and speak to her colleagues. This is a censure or a reprimand from colleagues to each other, and it's just indicative of the fact that she is not working with the council. She brought in two attorneys to go through everything instead of addressing us and speaking to us. So I think that there is an issue here, and it does require censure in some areas, and hopefully that will lead to a change where she might think differently in how she approaches her role as a council member, because her power to get things done for the residents of San Clemente really lies in working with the council. It's not in going online and saying, you know, saying things to the public. It's really working with us, and that's how she's going to get things done. So that's going to be my comments, that we do go forward with some type of censure.
Hi, Councilmember James, can I make a comment?
Certainly, please.
Thank you so much. I'd like to point out, Councilmember Ward, you have two attorneys representing you, and I had no one. And no one reached out to me. The city attorney didn't reach out to me to tell me my rights or that I had an opportunity for an attorney. So, you know, hey, you know, it's just fair play, right, for this game tonight? And also wanted to point out that you refused to be interviewed by the attorneys, you know, when they called you as a witness. So that's really important for me to point out. So you said, "I didn't make any testimony today or any comments." Why? Would you expect me to show up just so I can be tarred and feathered in front of everyone? You know, publicly flawed? I don't think so. You know, so I came prepared. You were prepared at the taxpayer's expense, so why not me, right? So that's what I would hope, but anyhow, those are my comments. So I think my attorneys eloquently stated what's really going on here and refuted all of you and Councilmember Hamm and Councilmember James' allegations listed in this resolution, because all they are is allegations, because no facts have been proven. You didn't have any findings of facts today that I could see, that I broke any rule, standard, or any law, okay? So this is just a big charade to embarrass me and harass me, in my opinion, all right? So there you go. But I certainly appreciate all of the comments tonight by the people who support me and support my work for this community and my service as a council member, and I appreciate all the negative commentary that came in as well, because I truly do value the First Amendment and free speech, and thank you all for commenting against me tonight, because we live in a democracy in America, we're still allowed to do that, and I'll continue to do that as a council member. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ward, do you have anything else?
No, I would just, direction from the council whether we're going to go forward with some of the issues of censure. I think, I think they're valid. I think we all know, you know, what we've encountered and what we've seen and how it has hindered the council advancing issues for the residents. So, you know, she's not apologizing or saying that she's going to try to work more cooperatively with the council. Doesn't mean we agreed, but actually work with us and follow city procedures. So I think that the censure is necessary.
You know, one of the things I offered earlier in the evening is if the Mayor Protem would come out and make a statement that she wouldn't release future confidential information and she'd refrain from publicly criticizing any city employee, I haven't heard a statement like that. So I am inclined to agree with you, Councilmember Ward, that I'm inclined to move forward with this, because I see no contrition here. I see no apology.
Mr. James, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to record to be clear that criticism of the city manager and public criticism of the city manager is protected activity.
Well, excuse me, I said city manager, I meant, I meant the city employees. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I'm glad you, I'm glad you did. So I'm inclined to move forward with this as well. Councilmember Hamm?
Yeah, it's getting late in the evening, and I think we've made a lot of good traction here and a lot of good headway. I wish the three of you the best of luck moving forward. I think a couple of takeaways I have from the legal advice that was given to Mayor Protem was, one of her attorneys said, "We haven't defended the facts this evening," which for me is very telling that they weren't able to defend the facts. I think they had some confusion. They thought this was a charge and a conviction, and at one point someone said they were under oath. I don't recall anybody came this evening that wasn't a council member taking an oath. Another interesting takeaway or quote I got from one of her representatives was, "As a highly educated individual and a public official, you have to accept whatever criticism comes your way." And unfortunately, the time has come when the criticism has come from Mayor Protem Ferguson's associates on city council. I, for one, will make a motion that we adopt the resolution as modified by Scott Smith. Hopefully I can get a second, and we can move forward.
I'll second that.
So prior to that, let me just ask Mr. Smith, do we need to deliberate on any of the issues if we're dropping it? We don't need to make a finding?
Oh, that's right, councilmember, yeah, mayor council.
Okay.
Yeah, I've locked up here. Would you like me to reiterate which deletions we'd recommended before you vote?
Yes, let's make sure we got it right. Mayor Protem Ferguson, will you mute yourself? I can hear Mr. Malamud.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, sorry, I've locked up here. I'm just having a hard time. I'm going to need just a minute. I don't know what's going on here.
Councilmember James, while Scott is looking at his document, I just wanted to point out just a typographical error on the resolution that needs to be taken care of once it's formally adopted, and that is, we have two Section 2s, and so when we're making the changes, the copy I have has two Section 2s on it, we'll need to address that as well.
I believe I corrected that.
Okay.
The copy I have has two Section 2s, so I just want to make sure that that's corrected in the final version.
So noted.
Thank you.
I'm back, sorry about that. I'm going through the resolution, proposed deletion of A2, ordering the manager to remove offense. B1, questioning and challenging the manager's decision to hire. B3, questioning and challenging the manager's decision regarding recruitment. Would be gone without...
C?
C, as in... I think...
And then also then D1, the mention of the publication to the letter of the editor, you said to delete that?
Yeah, so that text, Councilmember Ward, would just say what it says. D1 is the September 4th publication excluding the letter to the editor. So you wouldn't, you just, where I've annotated the exhibits, less than the full exhibit will be attached as exhibit, as in that case. G, you needed to explore further or delete, so I suggested you delete G. That's it.
Actually, Scott, would you go back to F?
Yes.
Was that? Okay, no, 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 I get it. F was still remaining. Okay, I'm sorry, I had it crossed out, and it's still remaining.
F, F might have had more to it.
Right.
So just... Or there's a date here, only that segment of the exhibit is proposed as substantiation.
All right.
So...
Deleted.
Any other, any other comments? We have a motion by Councilmember Hamm, a second by James, to adopt this resolution as amended by city attorney Smith. Madam clerk, please call.
No. James, before you do that, let me make an official motion, just so it's clear for the record.
Okay.
So I move to adopt resolution number 20-63 entitled Resolution, the City Council of the Cities of San Clemente, California, sentering Mayor Protem Laura Ferguson for unacceptable conduct with the modifications made and outlined this evening very clearly by Scott Smith.
Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
I am an O.
The motion carries three to one with Mayor Protem Ferguson dissenting.
City Attorney, any other business in regards to this proceeding?
No, I think that...
City Attorney, excuse me, you have, we have Oral Communications Part II published on the agenda. I know earlier you said we didn't have to have it, but it's published and we should give the opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry, earlier I was speaking about having two motions of communications under that agenda item, but you're right.
Okay, perfect. Okay, no worries, thanks.
I have not received any comments for Oral Communications Part II.
I move that we adjourn to the next regular council meeting. It's scheduled to take place on December 1st, 2020. Post-session will be considered at 5:00 p.m., and the regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 p.m.
Second. Sorry, Jean, go ahead.
No, no, motion by Hamm, second by Ward. City Clerk?
Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.